All right. All right. Do we have everyone here? All right, all rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, good evening, everyone. We are going to start out with our discussion of Board of Education goals, correct?
Yeah.
Correct? Okay. So, for the board, I put this out via email. I did receive one email back from Scott Liliberty, and I've had some discussion with others. So, I think most of you have kind of participated in some way to figure out where we can get started. This isn't the final pass. But I think the goal of tonight would be to decide on, you know, how many goals approximately. I'll say the average is usually five, so we don't want to have 12 board goals. But usually five is appropriate. And if tonight we can walk away with just agreeing on buckets of goals in terms of topics, whether it be technology is going to be a goal and what that looks like, I think we're going to have to end up putting it into committee. So when we're in committee, if we can assign the committees each a goal to talk about. I think by the next work session, we have to have a pretty, a working document. I'm also going to reach out to our Board of Education representative, Terri Lewis, in the field to see if she could maybe come and help out. On a short timeline, I'm not sure, but I'm going to reach out to her anyway to see if she can help formulate those. She's done a great job in the past in doing that, so I'm going to reach out to her to see if she can come help us wordsmith. But the purpose of this discussion is for us to talk about buckets and what that looks like for board goals. So I want to open it up to all of you, whoever wants to kick it off, in terms of looking at some of those buckets for board goals.
Maybe I'll start. I sent some around to folks that kind of spent some time going around to some other districts just to see what kind of goals that they had, and I copied and pasted some in. But in general, and I have too many buckets here, but some just for consideration. Safety, I think something around safety, right? Safety of our students and faculty is number one in my book. Test score improvement or academic improvement is another big one for me. Effective use of technology, improvement in behavior and discipline, mental health improvement and mental health. Something around the budget, being able to effectively administer the budget, stay under the 2% cap or do better than that. For staffing, attract and retain highly qualified staff. And then something around successful, us generating successful graduations measured possibly by the percentage that go to college, military, or into a trade upon graduation. And then one last one I had was something around effective communication with parents, students, and the community. Too many?
That's all right.
So under technology, we could actually cover Google and Linkit because they would also fall under technology.
Good.
Anybody need me to read them back to see if we're missing anything? You guys can jump in. Okay, I'm going to take that as a yes, so I'm going to read them back. Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to see something in terms of, you know, we're really encountering difficulty retaining, getting people to, you know, teachers in certain areas. We're having to go way, way above what we normally have, and it's going to be something that we're going to have to sustain in the future. I'm just wondering if we could consider looking at other competing districts, what their salary schedules are and their benefits, so we can have an idea of surrounding districts, what they're offering versus what we're offering, and why, you know, a lot of our teachers are leaving because they're getting, I'm hearing, eight and $10,000 raises. So this is going to be a problem. It's not going to go away, and I think we, I think definitely we should really try to really get involved in this so that we could sort of turn the corner and get ready for when we negotiate again.
All right, great.
Could that be, could that be an HR bucket?
Staffing.
Yeah, because I think the other thing that we need to do that we're in very desperate need of is revising job descriptions because that hasn't been done in a very long time. So maybe if we had an HR bucket, those two things could go in there.
Yep. Dave?
So, one thing I'd like to do is have some type of apprentice readiness program in place by next year. We talked about it before. And then I guess this would probably fall on a technology also. The technology bucket is to make sure that ESY pay structure is streamlined for next year so teachers aren't being sold.
Just a quick question. I've been trying to look for grants for that type of thing, and maybe you can help me with that because I've been having difficulty. I did find one site, but it wasn't clear enough because there is grant money for something like that.
Yeah, it's something we need to look into. Another, there's a lot of grant money out for pre-apprenticeship programs. One program that I've been looking into is the NAB2 MC3 program, which would have little cost to the district.
Can you repeat that again?
It's called NAB2 MC3, I believe it is. It's like a program that, it's 120 course hours. We can apply it into the school and go from there. Just something to explore. I don't know if that's the answer, but something.
I'm going to digress for one second. We should probably put that in IA, right? Just to make sure. And then after, in terms of just, I'll forget if I don't say it now. In terms of apprentice readiness, that should go into instructional affairs, for sure.
I wrote, I wrote that down. Tell Stacey since she's the chair.
Thank you.
I think that could go under a bucket, too, of like, successful grads. That could encompass a lot of things like the apprenticeship program. So we could measure how many kids are getting into that program, how many are, you know, and readiness for college, but have that all as, the success criteria is more than just college. It's, you know, trades, it's military.
Career ready, right?
And having that is one of the ways of getting those people there.
Do we want to have something just involving the structure of academies since that's where we're going anyway? Because that could be an academic goal where other things fit together. We could be talking about student achievement. We could be talking about the trades, everything that we're going to be bringing up in IA. I don't know if we want to find a way to combine that or if that's too much, you know, and we want to keep it more simple.
Well, I don't think that's a bad idea to make it broad for now, and then we can pare it down in committee. What else? Want me to read what we have real quick, and then you guys tell me if I missed something? So, I have safety, test scores, technology, Google, and Linkit. I have improvement of behavior and discipline, budget, mental health. Staffing, which includes compensation analysis and job descriptions. I have career ready, which encompasses academy structure, communication in general. Apprentice readiness, ESY pay structure, and that's all I have for right now.
Yeah, I have one other one, maybe assessing our current gifted and talented programs.
And for?
The elements program in the middle school.
What are we assessing, just to be sure?
Well, you know, when you look at the elementary school, we pretty much have a STEM program, and then they come to the middle school, and it's more in the language arts area and social studies. It's like a disconnect. Our students who are performing high in math in the elementary schools, there's no, there's nothing for them in sixth grade, those kind of areas. I think that might be worthwhile doing.
I think we talked about that yet.
And also, too, you know, maybe with the goals, you have the committees. Maybe, maybe those goals that would fit certain committees, the committee comes up with the goal rather than a full group.
Yeah, I think, I'll look at that and then email the board. And then if you can jump in on that discussion, I'd like you to be a part of that. Okay? Did I miss anything?
Connie brought up, I mean, couldn't that just, that be something also that IA looks at now? I mean, we could just take a look at that now and have it in the goals, but let's get started on it now.
In terms of the?
The disconnect.
Yeah.
Soon as and later, yeah.
Kathleen, would you mind putting that in instructional affairs? Assessing elements in from, going from elementary to middle school and the potential disconnect?
Got it.
All right, awesome. Is every, am I, I don't want to not include anybody. Are we, feel like we have a good start? Okay. What we'll do, I'm going to email this out to everybody, and then I think for us to get, there's a lot here. So for us to come up and pare it down to five, I think a lot of this can be collapsed. I'll just poll the group, and we'll see where we land. But to Connie's point, we'll put it back into committees that are appropriate for each goal that we mentioned. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Just make sure you don't reply all, or reply all once.
I will not do that.
All of us.
No, yeah, I won't do that. I'll make sure no one else does either. Anybody else for goal discussion? All right, good. I think we have a good starting point. Next on the list is the drama discussion.
Hi, everybody. So just an update. I can't go into any form of a personnel discussion because that wouldn't be appropriate. But after last week's meeting and impassioned speaking by students and also a letter written by Angelina in support of Mrs. Malatsky, I referred our drama discussion back to Mr. Anderson and Mr. Krigliano, and I asked them to come up with a solution. So on this agenda, Mrs. Malatsky is on here to be the co-leader of drama along with a host of other people that will be involved in the drama process as well. So just to let everybody know where we landed, that's where we landed in the transitional year. That's where we landed.
Can I say something, Joe?
You sure can.
Yeah, I just want to say that this was brought about by Angelina. She wrote a letter, which I don't know if we're going to read or not, to our attention. It kind of made us think a little more, you know, into what we were doing. And once, once we kind of got into that as a result of the letter, I think it made us look and say, well, maybe we ought to do this, this, and this. So, thanks, Angelina, for bringing that up.
And Angelina, if it's okay with you, and if it's okay with you, I'd like to share that. I thought it was a wonderful email. It really did start a lot of conversation among the board. Dear Dr. Hibbs, Mr. Anderson, and Mr. Krigliano, and the board was copied on this. Last night was difficult to watch. Being attacked at the podium by adults making false statements about me in front of my peers is not something I thought would happen during my time on the board. It was obvious to me after listening to the students last night, there had to be a transition plan for drama. I would like to formally request that a plan be put in place that creates an opportunity for Abby Malatsky to still be involved in the drama program. By continuing to be the NJDFL advisor, teaching theater classes and running cabaret are ways for Malat to remain close with the students. I can't imagine that Mr. Stefan would be opposed to a transition plan. I think the opportunity for Mr. Stefan to partner with Malat would be a fantastic way to show the students that good can come out of meetings like last night. Student voices should be heard, and where appropriate, compromise can be made to make everyone feel like their opinions matter. I plan to forward this email to the full board as well for their input. Thank you for your consideration. And there was a number of good thoughts.
So, I think, I think Mrs. Malatsky and Mr. Stefan are meeting tomorrow, I think, with Mr. Anderson, Mr. Krigliano to hammer out the specifics and go from there. Right? There we go.
All right. Next is recognition of our student board of, student board member. This is her last meeting.
All right.
So, in, in proud recognition of Angelina Chilla, the first elected student representative to serve on the Washington Township Board of Education from September 27, 2022 through August 31, 2023. Your contributions as a liaison to the district's student population sparked worthwhile dialogue and provides valuable feedback that enhance the board's governance. We are grateful for your committed service to our school's needs. Thank you, Angelina.
All right. Moving on to correspondence. Hope that we have anything there.
I have a question on that.
Oh, sorry, I skipped. Sorry, go ahead, Connie, and then I won't jump. Go ahead.
The way on correspondence?
Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Pause.
Mr. Anderson. Come on down.
Yes. Mr. Anderson is going to speak about the high school schedule.
All right, so good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, public and those of you viewing from home. So I'm just passing out a, a copy of the PowerPoint so you can follow along for this evening. So, I'm going to be speaking, speaking to you tonight about the high school schedule that's going to be implemented in a few weeks. We're calling it WTHS Pride 2.0. And as you can see, we worked, a lot of people worked very diligently on this, and we're very proud of the work that's going on for the last several months in order to get us where we are with our schedule for next year. So I'm going to move on. I do have some slides as well that you'll be able to view. So just to give you a little history of what the schedule has looked like over the years. So, forever, we had a traditional eight-period schedule, and that was in play until April of 2021. So just a few little notes of what that used to look like. So the students at that point were required 120 credits to graduate. They were periods one through eight, 45 minutes in order every day. Teachers had five classes, a prep, a duty, and a lunch. And back in 2015, 2016 is when research began into looking at different models and what that would look like at the high school level for different possibilities for schedules. So this has been going on for some time. So to jump ahead a little bit, we had the first pride model that was implemented in April of 2021, and it ran through the end of last school year. So at that point, the graduation requirement for credits was increased to 130 credits. So that's 10 credits more per student in order to graduate from high school. There was a rotating AM/PM wheel with a 50-minute unit lunch. And that's when the school stopped, and everyone ate lunch at the same time. Six out of eight classes took, they met daily for 55 minutes. There were two dropped per day. The unit lunch was used for eating, club meetings, and teacher office hours. So there is a copy of the schedule that we had been following. As you can see, when you look down the schedule, you'll see that during the unit lunch, we had a lot of things going on. There were science labs, there were club meetings, there was extra help, AKA office hours. So there was a lot going on. And from our estimation and a lot of the data that we've, we collected, it was not being utilized to the extent, theoretically, it looks great on paper, right? You would think you'd be able to get all of these things in and be able to have all this extra stuff. But what we found out is in practice, it wasn't really happening the way that we would have liked to have been. And additionally, the number one priority for us is always safety and security. Obviously, I love academics, very important, as well as extracurriculars. But without safety and security, we don't have anything. And it wasn't always the simplest to be able to locate children during this time. And there was just a lot of action in the building. We had a lot of help. We had a lot of people deployed and doing this. But it just wasn't rising to what we had hoped it would be as far as what children could get out of it. So, just a couple of notes. I keep forgetting to hit the button. There we go. How a change will help us. So safety and security obviously is number one. We need accountability during lunch throughout the building, and that was not taking place in my estimation and in the estimation of the staff and satisfactorily. That we could do better. Adequate supervision of all areas. More focused use of security staff and our SROs, and also less traffic in the hallways. The academic impact, which is a really nice thing. We're going to be adding some time back to classes. So instead of 55 minutes, we are going to go to 57 minutes. Some of you are saying, oh gee, two minutes. Two minutes is still a big deal. You know, if we're looking to maximize our time in class and have teachers be able to do what they need to do to the max, we could use a little bit of additional time. So if you multiply that out, you would be getting a few hundred extra minutes per year, per course, which is a good thing, I think. We also had a lot of concerns, you know, just safety and security. Again, I'm going to go back to that. And in speaking to, you know, I started there on December 16 of this past year, and I walked in the door and I was like, what is this? You know, what is happening during this time? Productive in many ways, but in other ways, not as productive as it could have been. So that's when the mindset kind of started, like, I think we could do a little bit better here. I think we can do more for our kids. And so we worked on that with a lot of input from staff, from many stakeholders. So I'd like you to see the steps that were taken from January to July of 2023 just to get an idea of how people thought about this. So we had some committee meetings. We put a committee together of probably about 20 individuals that came together and had a few meetings to discuss what the schedule would look like. We did a lot of research into what other schools that have these kinds of schedules, what they look like. And there are so many out there that we were able to take a look at. We did some surveys over the course of the time. We had meetings with the WTEA, which is our teachers' organization, central administration, power school administration. Those are the people that work so hard, like Annmar Guglio and Charlie Dowd, all those guys that put these programs and these schedules together because we wanted to see what would actually work, what could work as far as feasibility. Student groups, other stakeholders, and again, a lot of time went into researching and seeing what was going on in other schools. I do want to thank our administration for working on that, specifically Mr. Zakowski, our Orchard Valley Assistant Principal. He did a lot of work on this, as well as Mrs. Stott, his secretary at that time. They did a lot of the research, and we were able to kind of put all that together and see what was working and what wasn't working. So in looking at the survey and the interview conclusions, there were definitely some pros and cons that came into play. So our common themes were these. Our staff and students prefer the rotating classes because back in a traditional eight, you would have all eight classes every day. And speaking to students, they like dropping two and not having all classes every day because it would allow them to focus a little bit more on those singular subjects and be able to put that focus on their, you know, the night before, whatever you might be doing, to be able to have a little flexibility there with deadlines and things that they would be working on. Ultimately, the staff acknowledged the need to seriously address the unit lunch for safety, accountability, and supervision. I like accountability. I like to know where people are, what they're doing. And when you are having 2,200 children in a building with 350 employees as well, so we're looking at about 2,550 people every day that are walking around the building and going to different places, oh, I have lab, or I'm going to this club. All these things were a factor, and we didn't have that accountability that we truly would like to have in order to be as safe as we possibly can be. According to our staff and the data that we gathered through our surveys to them, office hours and the redos, retakes, and club meetings were not very effective. As a matter of fact, club memberships dropped by 50%, 5-0%. So we were looking at clubs that were not running as efficiently as they could have been. Students, because they were, they were torn. You could only go to so many places at one time. And unfortunately, in that short period of time, in the sense of if you have a lab and you need to get across the building, people weren't accessing how they, how we would like kids to be able to access things and be able to participate in things. So one of the big drawbacks is we have not had a late bus at the high school for, for a couple of years now. So this inhibited us from being able to have children stay after school and be able to have a late bus to go home. This new plan is bringing back late buses. I would like to thank Mrs. O'Donnell, Suzanne O'Donnell, the Transportation Department, and all that team, Blanchard Zadi, for looking into this. The flexibility of my colleagues and coming together as a secondary team to decide how we can divide it up so the middle school could get some buses, the high school could get some buses. The number of hours and time that went into this is a lot, and we're looking to move forward and to get this going for the kids. So as you can see, unit lunch is going to look a little different. It's not going to be 50 minutes where everybody goes and finds their way and all of that. It's going to be a first and second lunch as part of a period in the PM wheel. So what does that mean? It means we are sticking with the rotating schedule, so students will still enjoy that. I feel like most kids, I'm looking at Daniel, he's smiling. I think you'll like it. Hope you like it. We'll be sticking with that rotation so students have that. It's better for kids. I think it's better for staff to have kids at different times of the day. You know, sometimes, I, I do pretty well in the morning, and some people may not. It depends. And by having that rotation, that flexibility, that's another benefit, I think, for students and for staff as well. So what we're looking at happening is, is that half of the students will go to class first, and then they will go to lunch second. The other part of the school, and this would vary by day, by the way, the second half would then go to, I forget what I just said. So lunch, it's either class and then lunch, or lunch and then class. Okay? So we would have half of the school eating at one time. You'll see a little, in a minute or so, you'll see a little more clearly what that would look like to increase the accountability. Kids are still going to have a choice. I'll get to that in a minute. But you'll be able to see exactly what we're looking at for this. So I mentioned it earlier. Classes would increase to 57 minutes. It's a benefit. Teachers, there will be no change to their schedules and what they look like. Teachers would still get a 40-minute duty-free lunch. We would have our office hours shift to 2:10 to 2:35. Teachers are under contract to be with us at least until 2:35 each day. So we would have those opportunities on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays for a late bus. And if there were another day that a teacher or a club would make available and a parent would like to be able to provide the transportation and is able to, we would, of course, welcome that as well. Our lunch supervision would be handled by certified staff who have PM duties. Plus, we would have our administrators, security, SROs, et cetera, would all be deployed. Club meetings would return to after-school, and again, to bring up the late buses coming back on those days. Science labs. So last year, we were looking at about a 20-some-minute period for science labs. Not effective. We weren't getting the, what they're intended for out of the time. So we're looking to add our weighted classes, which would be our AP and honors classes. We would put back the lab, and it would be once every, to every cycle, every other cycle. And we're going to attach it back to physical education and health. The CP and integrated levels will infuse the lab activities into their daily class. So Miss Moore, under her direction, they will be making some adjustments to curriculum in order to still have labs just infused into the time that they have allotted. There's no change to staff or student arrival times, and there's no change to how we schedule students. They still choose eight classes, and they still have to earn 130 credits to graduate from high school. So juniors and seniors will have the ability to choose from a variety of locations at which they could eat lunch. They will have a few days to select their location before locking in that choice. And again, that's for accountability purposes. So we would have, for example, cafeteria A, cafeteria B, quayway, which is our little outdoor area for those who may not know the high school. And well, the days that we have inclement weather, the playhouse would be available as well. So kids will still be able to choose. We're looking at as a real privilege for our 11th and 12th graders. Freshmen and sophomores will be assigned a location by grade level. So we're looking freshmen, you know, we have, they're the newest to our school coming in. They could use a little more structure and kind of knowing where they need to be. We're going to have that happen. They're going to be in a location. 10th grade sophomores, we are looking to, currently, I believe we can fit them in one location. There may be two. So that would be like a gradual, little bit of choice. We're looking at it. You start off, and you kind of graduate and move up as you go as far as the, the choices that you could have in regard to that. So additional staff coverage. We were using a lot of staff at lunchtime for additional pay and voucher. That won't be the case as much. It would be actually quite minimal in comparison. Where we will need some additional staff is we, for our after-school, to be there for the late buses and to be there for a holding room in order for students to have a place to go, you know, after their activities. I know it looks small, you know, from here, but this gives you an idea of what the schedule would actually look like. So we decided to go and rename the days red, white, and blue because this is Washington Township High School, and we are in America. And also gold, okay? Because we get the gold standard in Washington Township. We want, we want to do a great job. So we're looking at red, white, blue, and gold day. And if we have a different day, we used to call them day zero. Now we're going to call them green day. I didn't come up with that name. What do you think about it, right? Green day, alternative music, alternative schedule. Are you with me? You get it? It's a little different. I wasn't a fan of that. I wasn't a fan of that kind of music, but still and all, we're looking at it. You like it? I mean, it's just a different way of looking at it. I hope the kids will be entertained as much as the adults are. We're all starting off with a Green Day, the first day of school, so students can get to know their teachers to the best of their abilities. But as you can see, some of the changes that we made is that we're starting each day. If you look at Red Day, they're doing periods 1, 2, 3 for the morning wheel. Then the next day, we start with period 4. So it's logical in the sense of 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, and they just stay in order per wheel. And the same thing happens in the afternoon wheel. So it's hopefully a little bit more logical as to the order of things. I know that the schedule was like 1, 4, 3, something along those lines. To me, it was very confusing. I had a hard time with it. I know the students and the staff were more used to it than I was in the first couple of months, but we, we put a lot of thought into the details of this. Again, the goals here were to increase our accountability, to increase the security of the building and knowing where the children are, and also opening up more opportunities for kids to access clubs and be able to get a ride home after school and be able to stay after and maybe go get extra help and then go to German Club or then go to, you know, whatever other activity you could be involved in. So we're looking at this as ways to expand opportunities for students. As you can see, there is, it will be delineated on the schedules on Power School when students receive them as to when their lunches are. But it's possible, just to be clear, that on Day, on Red Day, a student might have class first and then eat. The next day, they might eat and then have class. It's going to vary. But we're going to have accountability in place so that students, we know where they are, they'll be held accountable for being there, and it gives us a better way to keep control over the entire building and the flow. So without further ado, this is our, our schedule that we're looking forward to implementing next year, and I thank you all for listening.
Thank, thanks, Mr. Anderson. Thank you. Yep. Any questions from the board? No, okay.
We forget five? Yeah, there is no five.
What, five?
I think it's all seven.
Next, we're going to have the presentation of the grading system.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to share information tonight on grading profiles and grading scales. At the last board meeting and policy review, questions arose about the grading scale. This presentation will address the philosophy and the math of a grading scale, as well as the communication, articulation, and training around grading profile and grading scales here in district. We're going to begin with a grading scale video. Here, Rick Wormley will share insight into the grading scale.
Well, that's a really interesting question, this idea of zeros on the 100-point scale. Notice it's not just zeros, it's zeros on the 100-point scale. Because zeros on the 4.0 scale, 3.0, check, check, minus, and zero, those are all fine. Because that zero has an equal influence on all the other numbers if you were to mathematically calculate the grade in some massive aggregate. And that's an issue right there, we'll get to in just a moment. But this idea of zeros on the 100-point scale is one of the most controversial issues everywhere I go. And it's born out of this idea of using the 100-point scale as a way to measure and report human progress against a goal with great specificity. It was never meant to do that. It's a bit of a corruption to do that. So let's take a look at some of the, the reasoning behind not doing it step by step. First, consider, it doesn't matter when, where you set the line for what each letter grade is. Some school districts, an A is 95 to 100, sometimes it's 94, sometimes it's 93, sometimes it's 90, and sometimes it's 80 to 100. A B is 60 to 79. A C is 40 to 59. A D is 20 to 39. And an F is 19 to 0. Well, they're trying to show that's a 4.0 scale with 20 level increments for each one of the 4, 3, 2, 1, and 0, trying to equate 4.0 to 100.0 should teachers need that translation. It's what the community will tolerate. There's not like a set of research data that says an A should be this or a B should be that. Okay. So now the teacher's deciding, I've got this massive F range, often that's 59 to 0 or 60 to 0 or 65, something like that. Just for the sake of example, we'll say that that's 60 to 0. Okay. So a D would be, the lowest D would be a 51 in that case, or excuse me, a 61. So now we're thinking, do I give the lowest, most hurtful and unrecoverable end of the F range or to give the most recoverable end of the F range with lots of hope, but nevertheless still an F? We begin to think, hmm, do I need degrees or gradations of F-titude? You're a tiny F? You're a large gigantor F! You don't need to do that. Once you're into the F-zone, you're in the zone of not there yet or no evidence of learning. Good reason or bad reason, moral, immoral, it doesn't matter. You have not demonstrated evidence. So in some high schools, there might be no Carnegie unit, no credit given, but whatever it is, good reason or bad, no credit's given. Okay. Well, I have to also teach and grade in such a way as to engender hope. If a kid wants to throw down the ball and go home, I can't teach him because he's divested from my classroom. If a kid gets 1-0, it takes a mammoth pile of perfect 100s just to creep up to the D-zone, which falsifies a grade, but also is so overwhelming to most students who are really humans in the morphing, that why try? It's just, it's insurmountable to me, and I've got to keep my kids vested. So if I'm trying to decide, June is 0 and a 59 or a 60, I'm going to decide on the most hopeful end, but nevertheless, an accurate report. This kid has not shown evidence of his learning. An F is an F is an F. I don't need to decide whether it's a gigantic F or a small F because I'm going to respond the same way. Investigate and take corrective action. Now, you might be thinking, some of those students will brag, man, I did nothing at all. I, I blew it off. You all worked so hard, but me, who did nothing, I still got a 60. Yeah! What's that kid really saying? I did nothing at all. You guys worked hard, but I did nothing and I still failed. Ooh, that doesn't sound so good. The students are the first ones to realize how absurd this all is, and they don't think they're getting something for having done nothing. That's not even close to the truth. All we're doing is mitigating this extraordinary negative impact. Think about this. What if we gave the A the same influence as we give Fs today? 60 to 0? Well, the A is now 60 points. 100 down to 40 is the A range. Well, it'd be actually physically hard to get anything less than straight As. You would never allow such an outlier of an A to have such a skewing upward influence. You should find it just as absurd to find an F having such a skewing lower influence. We wouldn't do that. If a kid got in the teens, he got a 15 out of 100, an 18 out of 100, and in one glorious moment of clarity, he got a 98. Mathematically, they would skew him up into the passing range, but you would never tolerate that. That's an idea that Doug Reeves talks about in his writings, and it's worth thinking about. Well, consider this. The grading scale in a lot of places is 190, 80, 70, 60. That's a 4.0 scale, 4, 3, 2, 1. A 2.0, well, basic ratios and proportions that third graders understand, that would be an 80. A 70 would be a 1. A 60 on a 100-point scale would be about a 0 on a 4.0 scale. Well, people misapply work ethics. They think, all right, it's a 100-point scale we just did. I'm not going to give you a 60. I'm going to give you nothingness, which is a 0. How many levels is a 0 below failure? Well, it's 50, 40, 30, 20, 10, 0. That's six levels below failure. It's not failure, it's six levels below. That's the exact same thing as saying on a 4.0 scale, child doesn't do anything, there's no evidence of learning. Instead of giving him a 0, which would be legitimate because he has no evidence, he has no credit for doing or learning anything, well, I'm going to give him a negative 6. In other words, he has to climb six levels up just to get even with absolute failure. This is insanity. But wait, it gets worse. Think about this, and I actually heard this from a school board member in Norfolk, Virginia. Think about this, we do the temperature readings for five days in June. Now, Norfolk, Virginia, it's very hot and humid, and we use Fahrenheit. So those of you who do Celsius, you'd have to make the translations. But basically, if we did like 87 one day, 88 another, 84 another, 85 another, oh, Friday, my bad, I totally forgot to take the temperature. So it's a 0. Well, mathematically, calculate that all up, and it's 68.8 degrees. Is 68.8 degrees accurate for the weather in Norfolk, Virginia in a hot week in June? Not even close. And grades have to be accurate.
So I chose that video based on the comments and the questions from the last board meeting to our current board meeting tonight. I think Rick Wormley does a nice job addressing a lot of the questions and helps us build our understanding of that mathematically accurate grading scale that we'd like to see happen here, too. On this slide, you'll see a picture of an article. Additional articles have been published, just like Rick Wormley's work, over decades, especially within this last decade, surrounding the topic of grading scales. This one, the Case Against Zeros in Grading, is attached to a communication that would be sent out to all staff to help, again, additionally build our understanding of why a scale of 60 to 100 matches the scale of an A to an F. A grading profile and a grading scale are truly organizational tools that help us have clarity and consistency. One of the, these organizational tools are for assessment and grading, and one of the first things that I heard as I came into district that we needed some clarity and consistency on, especially in our middle school and high school settings. On this slide, you can see the purpose behind grading. Everything we do starts with that purpose. So grading is to focus on learning targets and standards. It's to be consistent and clear for our students. It's to measure learning and mastery, and it should be equitable. Further, how communication and collaboration will take place is listed below. The goal is to provide this information now and also to create opportunities for collaboration during the school year to best support the implementation of the tools and structures that we will be utilizing. On the right of this slide is a snapshot taken from the communication ready to be shared with 612 staff. The communication includes supports such as setting up and pushing out the profile in Power School, district guidelines, and additional articles to help build our understanding. Here's a closer look at one of those supports. Again, for consistency across 6 through 12, our administrative team worked together, collaborated, and were able to devise district guidelines. These support the collaboration not only within departments but across departments because of that unity. Further, supports are included in the communication, such as lesson plan exemplars and grading profile examples by department. Training and articulation opportunities are also listed and are part of that communication to staff. Here you can see, as a part of that support tool, that a SMOAR newsletter would be shared in the summer, my goal is tomorrow, and these snippets come from that SMOAR newsletter to all 612 staff. August 31st provides us an opportunity and faculty meetings with follow-up in department meetings. Further, September 5th is an entire professional development day within the district where we can dive deeper with our teachers into grading profiles. In addition to that, ongoing faculty meetings, in-service days, and our goal to provide a common PLC time at least twice a semester for each of our departments in 6 through Another question that came up or comment that was heard was about the involvement of staff in the decision-making process. Here is illustrated a decision-making protocol. And this is something that I share with every team that I have the opportunity and privilege to work with. It's a hierarchy from the least amount of involvement, but the most amount of efficiency, like command, all the way down to consensus, where you have the most involvement, the most buy-in, and also takes the most amount of time, and sometimes you never get there. What I often will utilize is consultation. This allows us to be a organization that can make decisions and move forward based on a variety of perspectives, hearing all points of view, and as the decision-maker, making that decision, knowing that some will disagree with it. But overall, that, the importance of the goal of clarity, consistency, and the ability for our teams to collaborate through that clarity and consistency is most important. So this decision was a consultative decision with the administrative team. Everyone, as I mentioned, cannot be part of every decision, but the goal is to have this decision-making protocol part of our normal processes. There will be lots of opportunity for teachers and that collaboration to be a part of the innovation that we want to see happening here in district. So collaboration and department autonomy comes in first through those department meetings, September 5th, and throughout the school year. And by being able to have clarity and consistency around a grading profile and a grading scale, we now have the time to collaborate around innovation. What do we want for our classroom environments? What do we want for our students? Those teaching and learning goals that we can work together on. Those are the consensus types of decisions that you want, and those have those large involvements throughout the entire school year. So I really look forward to tapping into our talented teachers and innovating together throughout this school year. And I'm appreciative of the opportunity to share the philosophy and the math behind the grading scale and why a consistent grading profile for 612. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Dr. Nathan.
Questions? Questions?
Well, I just have a comment. I know some people had difficulty seeing some of this, and we have it on our screen. Maybe if you could also push that out, like on the website, so anybody that wants to be able to see the figures and everything that they can.
Absolutely.
Just a question, clarification. I did see where on Power School, from now on in this grading system, a 60 would be the lowest grade that could be put on there.
Yes.
Has there been any discussion where perhaps a student could get a 60 with an asterisk so the parent knows it's like a 20 or 30?
Again, those are possibilities. We could iterate along the way. I've also heard recommendations about a 10-point scale. As far as that communication piece, besides Power School, there are lots of opportunities for our teachers and our parents to have that dialogue, or our students, parents and teachers to have that dialogue. So, you know, we have emailing systems, we have lots of different ways to communicate. So through Power School is a possibility, but also knowing that that's not the only way, and certainly that is not one way to build a relationship. So we do want that ongoing communication to be happening.
Scott?
I think some of the biggest concerns I'm hearing is that, the concern that kids will contemplate a system.
Yeah, and I think Rick Wormley, he's an author and researcher. He's been doing research on grading for, again, decades. I think he addressed it pretty well in that a 60 is an F. So, you know, I don't know that using a mathematically accurate scale helps our, our students game a system or not game a system. And I think more importantly, it allows us to have that conversation because if gaming of the system is happening, then what may be the root causes of that? And there's another opportunity to build relationships, right? Working with our kids, finding out their stories, working with our teams of teachers around solutions that make our learning environments excellent.
Couple of comments. Yeah. One would be, I think it's a big change, right? So it's, everybody's used to, we all grew up with getting zeros and the fear of getting zeros and getting home and getting beaten. Not that I'd beat my kids for that. You know, but is there a different way to deal with that fear of the student that does nothing and kind of takes advantage of it, right? And I think, talked about this with you, Dr. Hibs, like, is there a disciplinary type thing of like? thing of like, oh, you know, you don't turn your homework in three times, you're going to get a detention, or a note goes home to mom and dad that you didn't turn yourself and stuff in? Because I know like when I like at Power School, if I saw a kid that, you know, got a 60, maybe didn't study correctly, but if you missed an assignment, that's a whole different discussion, right? Like, different discussion. So I think we should think about a way to potentially address that in that type of way.
Yeah. I mean, you want to take that one?
Sure. Yeah, and I think both, both of those questions or comments are going, are pinpointing the opportunity to work with our students, right? So if, it's not that a grade is a punishment, it's that a grade's a reflection of their understanding, and we can now strategize around if there is an unaffected student or a student who is, has a pattern of not completing work. It gives us an opportunity to dig into the why, to really provide those support services. And I look at Ms. Grimaldi as our counselor teams, work with our teachers and our students as well, to look at all of the factors that might be causing those things because a punishment doesn't necessarily give us solutions or reasons why. So it gives us the opportunity to have that dialogue.
Scott, to your point. I think that teachers inherently don't want kids to just not turn in work, right? And I think at that moment, you know, if we're talking high school, we should just have a system for, obviously, those teachers to relay those concerns up, communicate with the parent, and then we figure out what's actually going on with the child. There could be one of 100 reasons why a child's not handing in work, and one of them could be he or she just doesn't want to do it. But there could be 99 other reasons that play into that that, you know, we don't know. And, you know, we don't know what's going on in the home. You know, there could be catastrophic things that happen every day that we just don't know about. So I think that all starts with the communication piece between the teacher and the parent, and then relaying of that to administration and counseling so that we can form a plan together. Because any child, whether it's a zero or a 60, let's take the grade out of it, right? We would all agree that if a child's not doing work, it's a problem, and there could be millions of reasons why. And then we need to care about our kids enough to dig through that and peel it back and figure out, is it, is it just, I'm not doing it? And is it being obstinate? Or is there another really good reason? But I think that, that should all be a constant conversation between teacher, parent, student, counselor, and administration. And in that, you know, Jen, we're tasking you with that, that piece.
Obviously, nobody can argue with either one of you. I think there's a reality, though, that, you know, and hopefully we'll be able to address this, maybe with negotiations and prep time and things, but our teachers at the, at the high school lever, level have over 100 kids. The kids come into class, they leave, they don't see them. There's no time during the day to catch up with them. And, you know, it's pretty hard to do some of the things you're saying, but they're 100% accurate. But when you're dealing with the number of kids that you have and the kinds of things that are on your plate, it's a little unrealistic. For everybody, okay, for all your kids that are having problems, it's difficult, you know? Lower-class sizes and more, more prep time will really help in that matter, for sure.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I truly value the work of our teachers. I was a teacher. I have a family full of teachers. It is hard work, and it's skillful work. So one of the things that, in the conversations around grading profiles and grading scales that I've been able to have with our administrative team since I've come in the summer, is around the aspect of giving more collaboration time. Because teachers have so much talent, and together, combined, those ideas really start to gel fly and also lift the level of work for everyone, right? So building in some common PLC, some common planning time that's not already on the calendar has been a goal of ours. So we're looking to do that each semester for our departments of teachers, trying to find ways that they can have that collaboration time because it is so valuable.
Dr. Nathan, there's also been, I would be remiss not to bring it up, but teachers have talked about also the redo policy, that in the same breath of what Connie just said, you know, you have a student that locks in, hands back, applying paper, and they get a redo, right? So that's also hard to manage in fairness to the teachers because then they have to turn around and make sure they keep track that the student's going to be able to catch up and do the redo. So I'm hoping at some point that can be addressed because right now, it's the appearance that we're going to make the floor 60, and then every student gets a redo, and I think it would be really difficult to manage that. So I hope that we can put together something that supports also the teachers in terms of a redo policy that makes sense because, and I'm not saying it happens often, but I'm saying that we have heard as board members of students doing that, and it's difficult for them to keep track. So I just want to bring it up.
Absolutely. And I flipped back in the slide deck just because I didn't read this document, but it's included as part of our support tools, and retakes and redos are addressed in there. One of the important things is building that growth mindset and getting our kids to achieve all that they can achieve, right? We want them to learn those standards and attain those skills. So we know that sometimes that doesn't happen the first time around. But that doesn't happen on everything and every portion of that learning. So just looking at that 70 category, just summatives, in a semester of, say, 20 weeks or so, four to five summative assessments as a guideline, and there's going to be room for autonomy around that with our departments as they come back this school year. But only retaking within that category, so there's only a few assessments, and it's only going to be something different that wasn't already given as far as the assessment itself, and only the parts that need to have that growth goal. With the, with the caveat of having that reteaching intervention, the student is doing something because part of that growth mindset is that hard work leads to that achievement. And we all have misses. We all have things that take more time to learn, but we can do that. We don't have to take the whole thing over again, and it's not the same thing, but it's very targeted and specific. And then there's also guidelines in there because the reality of running an organization and the timeframes of our grading periods, that those are only happening before the next summative assessment is happening. Also because our skill sets are cumulative. So we want to make sure that our kids are gaining that knowledge, showing that knowledge before that next summative assessment is coming. So we, we're, with those guidelines, it should reduce some of that challenge, but I truly believe that the collaboration of our teams of teachers is what helps lift that level as well, and hence that common PLC planning time is so vital. Thank you.
So are the, the idea for retakes and how a student goes about getting a retake, is that going to be something that's going to be department handled? So like the English department at the high school would handle it one way, or is that going to be individual teacher?
So that's why we have our support tools. So like this is an example of the district guideline, and it includes the retake redo. So that would be across 612 consistent.
Just with the collaboration, could you, can you kind of explain how that's going to happen?
Well, we're still in the innovation phase of that. We are meeting as teams and working through what ways can make that happen. So as I mentioned in the last meeting, I've had an opportunity to talk to Jerry in April. I've had opportunities to talk to our administrative teams. And as our teams of teachers come back, we have opportunities to share ideas on how that can happen per department, per semester, or possibly twice a semester, in order to have those departments have that collaboration time. But we don't have that finalized yet.
The reason why I bring that up, many years ago, with the middle school, the teachers had about 45 minutes at the end of the day, and that's when they met with their departments. That's when they helped kids. We've moved far away from that now. And when we did away with the, the different teaming at the schools, we used to have a common planning period. They don't have that now. And teachers actually leave the end of the day, five minutes at the end of the day. So that's why I asked the question, how, how's this going to take place? Are they going to get substitutes in, out of class? But you said you haven't really thought about that yet.
Oh, no, we have thought about it. There's a variety of ways that we've brainstormed. We want some teacher input on that, and it might look different per department, but the opportunity to have that planning time per semester would be the same across all departments. So some might be after school, but some might be during the school day. It's going to depend on what works for the department. A department that has a lot of coaches may not want that after school, and it would be an opportunity to look at, do we then utilize subs, or do we utilize an opportunity to work together as a team to provide coverage in a way that supports our students' learning and also supports our teachers' planning? So we have a couple of different ideas that we have brainstormed out that need to be now fleshed out with our teams of teachers and our departments.
Dave?
So we've had 60s of the floor for the first marking period for a couple of years now, right? Is there any data that we have, like that proves this theory from, from previous years in the first marking period for us? Is that something we can, like, look into?
Yeah, I mean, to me, the data would be moving forward. When you look at other districts, Monmouth County, Mercer County, districts within this county, they've moved to a scale that is mathematically accurate. We're competing against, when I say competing against, when our students are looking to apply to trade schools, to colleges, when they're looking for their next opportunities, they're competing against all the other high schools, you know, within the nation and actually, we're a global society now. So we want to make sure that we have, at minimum, an even playing field. I want to see our students have every single opportunity possible to be successful. So we might see that in an increase in scholarships, in an increase in the variety of schools that our graduates go to, in the variety of opportunities they have as a result of, of this accurate grading scale being put into play. Humans have lots and lots of variables, so we can talk about different ways to measure the data. We're going to have to keep in mind that there are lots of variables. We're not going to be able to pinpoint just one. But the grading scale is an organizational tool. It's not, it's not necessarily a learning tool. It's an organizational tool that helps us be consistent and clear and run our school district. By having those, it lets us then utilize our time so that we can innovate. And I know we've had conversations about our CTE programs and making great opportunities for our kids. In order to do that, we have to have clear organizational tools so that there's clarity and consistency there. So when our teachers have the opportunity to collaborate, we're talking the same language, and we're able to then spend our time innovating.
You talk about the level playing field with some other districts. I mean, a lot of them have 10-point scales, right? Is there a thought maybe that we move to that? I know, like, can't do it now because it's already set up for, for this year, but future, that might be something we look at?
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point. I think we should always be looking at, what are iterations that work for our school district? Because 60 as a, as a floor was already in your policies, to me, it made sense not to change the whole grading scale with so little time in coming into district, but just to making sure that mathematically we had a scale that wasn't hurting our kids. Moving forward, absolutely, we can look at that. That's, that's where we can have input this year, as far as, does that make sense for our district to have 50 as a floor and have a 10-point scale all the way from an A to an F? Again, organizational tools so that, that can be iterated.
Can we talk maybe about the 70-30 split? I know that causes some angst, right? Because there's only a few summatives, and you blow one at 70% of your grade. What's the theory there? Because I know it used to be like 50-50, 60-40. Now we're moving to 70-30. So we're weighting them very heavily.
Yeah. So one of the, one of the illustrations in the communication that I'd like to send out to all staff, 612, is a progression for mastery weight. So you'll see we go from standards-based grading in K2 to a 60-40 in 3-5 to a 70-30 in 612. And the rationale is that we want lots of opportunity for practice and failing forward where that weight is, is minimal because, you know, when you're, when you're learning to ride that bike, you're going to fall off the bike a lot. But ultimately, if you're riding the bike at the end, that's what, that's what matters. So we want lots of opportunity in that 30% category. So we're talking like 25, 20 to 25 examples or opportunities to learn those skill sets and those standards so that we know when our students are ready for those summative opportunities. The summative opportunities being four to five, maybe six, in, within that semester allows us enough time to gauge mastery, but also to have then those redos because you're right, that 70%, we want our students to be mastering those standards. That's how you increase your overall test scores when we talk about our standardized testing. That's how we can really ascertain that learning is happening. But we also want opportunities for growth there, too. So that's why the redos and retakes come in only in that category. And 60 as a floor will make a difference with that as well.
And I'm assuming then projects, presentations, things like that would count towards that 70. So it would be a better chance, I guess, to have more in the way of grades there instead of just going by tests or by units, which wouldn't happen as often?
Absolutely. There are lots of ways to show mastery, and project-based learning, hands-on opportunities, labs, those are all great summative ways. And that's where our teachers, as they come back during those faculty meetings, during those, the PD Day, September 5, and really throughout the semester in those in-service opportunities and collaboration time, are going to be working together to figure out, well, what does make sense in that 70 category? We have, every, every department supervisor has built models and examples, but we want that authenticity of our teachers working on that as well together.
Dr. Nathan, we've gotten some questions and comments. Are we confident right now in schools starting in two weeks that teachers know exactly what goes into that 70%, the 70% bucket versus the 30?
Yeah, we've had grading profiles. They may have been three categories. They may not have been the same weights. But a summative and a formative assessment are things that are part of your undergraduate learning experiences, or your master's, if you're alternate route, learning experiences. So these are, these are not uncommon terms. Assessment is not something new to our teachers. The ability to collaborate and have that consistency, 612, is what would be new and different, but that's only going to allow for more of that conversation to happen.
All right, great. Thank you. Connie?
I got this text from a teacher. What's the timeframe? How long can it take to do a retake? What if they don't show? Can a zero be given instead of a 60?
Right. So with a mathematically accurate grading scale, if we were 0 to 40, a zero could be given, but we are 60 to 100, an A to an F, that's our, that's our scale. So it would be a 60 if, if they just chose not to take a summative assessment at all. Again, I think that would be an opportunity for dialogue, you know, what's, what's happening there that someone would miss something of such importance, right? The opportunity to show that mastery. And I'm sorry, what was the first part of your?
How long?
Oh, that's part of our district guidelines. So they have to, students would be able to understand where they had errors after taking that assessment, and they would then be retested or have an opportunity to demonstrate that mastery in the areas of, that they needed to show growth after some type of intervention. So some reteaching, an intervention tool, whether an iXL, Bebel, working with the teacher, to be able to then take the portion that they didn't, that they weren't able to show mastery in yet. So that's not an entire retake. And it would happen before the next assessment.
Now, you came to us with a lot of experience, and you worked in a lot of different school districts in curriculum. The school districts that you worked in, did they have the, the floor at 60? And what, what kind of feedback can you tell us about that?
Yes. This is, school districts have been transitioning to this over the last 10 years or so, possibly even longer. The, change is hard for anybody. If you are a brand-new teacher coming into the system, this is what you know. This is the norm for you. If you started when there was a different system in place, then it might be a slight adjustment. But because we're pushing it out through Power School, our, our teacher and staff just needs to know what they're considering formative and what they're considering summative. The actual grading profile, those percentages, those weights, those are all automatically calculated. So it's no different whether it was a different grading profile or this one, as they're inputting that information into Power School. It really is an organizational tool, and I think Rick Wermelie did a nice job of saying it's, it's a, it's a cultural preference within each of the communities, whether you're using a 10-point scale, whether you're using a seven-point scale, but the mathematical accuracy of the increments within that scale, that should be consistent throughout. should be consistent throughout.
So I just think on the retake, we have to be very clear, especially so there's consistency. Because I've seen, just personally, right, and friends and everybody else I know, a lot of inconsistency in the way that's been administered. And theoretically, I think it's great, right? Like, the kids are forced to go back and learn what they did wrong and, you know, it's reinforcing the learning and it's helping them master the standards. That part's great. I just, some teachers, you know, allow it. Some people don't, you know. Oh, we didn't make it in time for the summative, so you lost the chance to do that. And then also, you could have a kid that worked really hard and got a 79, so they didn't qualify for the retake. And you've got another kid that got a 72, and all of a sudden, they do the retake and they got 100. So the poor kid that, you know, put in their best effort, didn't get a chance to do it. So I think we just need to address some of those so we don't create inequities there. And, you know, you can retake it, but maybe you don't get full credit, right? A way that we're not hurting the kids that did prepare and didn't do as well, right? And giving them the chance also to reclaim some of that learning so it's getting reinforced. I'd love to see consistency with that.
My question is, could an average be taken of the 60 and the retake? So that there is the learning that's forthforth, the grade goes up because the retake is successful, but you're not getting that 100 or whatever it is because of a retake? Just a question, just curious.
Yeah. No, and I understand the perspective where you're coming from. I often try to reduce an example to something super concrete, like riding a bicycle, right? So if I've fallen off my bicycle 10 times as I'm learning to ride it, and now I'm riding it pretty regularly and smoothly, do I want to say that that's an 80%? Or do I want to say, no, you've got 100% of that bicycle now mastered? You know, our real goal is that our students are obtaining all of our goals, that they're understanding those skills, understanding those standards and attaining those skills. So if they can demonstrate that, to me, what's most important is demonstrating that within that timeframe, you know, before that next summative assessment. Not that they are not going to get full credit for that, but more so that they're now able to demonstrate it.
So my next question would be what Scott brought up. If a kid worked hard and got a 79, could they ask for a retake?
Well, the retakes and redos are based on areas for growth. So if a student has mastered most of those standards and there's one or two that they were struggling with on that assessment, and they can do relearning, they can have some intervention, and have an opportunity to have it in a different way to show that mastery. I think, again, our goal is every student succeeding. So in order to do that, we would want those opportunities to be there.
One last one. I got my soapbox left. I think one perspective, absolutely want every kid to master every skill, and that should be our goal. But I think we're also trying to prepare them for life, trying to prepare them for college, where they're not going to get the retake in college, most likely, right? 90% of them may. When they go to work, they may not get that chance to redo whatever they turned in for their assignment. So I think also teaching them accountability of being max-prepared the first time you do something, that there's consequences when you don't do well the first time. You can reclaim parts of it, but, you know, we're teaching them to put their best foot forward. I think that's an important lesson that we should not lose sight of when we roll this out.
Agreed. And one of the things as we were looking at, well, where in life can you have redos? If you're taking the bar for law school, for example, the LSAT, there's redos. If you're taking the Praxis test as an educator, there's redos. If you're taking the SAT, there's redos. When it comes to a testing situation in life where there are still tests outside of education setting, there are redos. So I think it is preparing our students and all of us, if we were taking one of those assessments. I know when I took the Praxis, I wanted to do my very best the very first time because I didn't want to have to retake it. And I think if we're capable, we're going to show those capabilities. And if we're not, we need that reteaching and we need to take it again. I think we still have opportunities to fail forward, right? If I'm giving a presentation and I bomb it, I can't reclaim that moment in time again that happens. But I can learn from it, and the next time I give a presentation, it can be better. So I think it does mirror real life in those ways. But I also understand where your perspective's coming from of we want to build that efficacy in our students to do their very best on the very first opportunity to do that.
No, I just got one thing to say. I think it comes down to the basics of you get at what you put in. If a child chooses not to do anything, they choose to be lazy, they deserve to get a zero. If that child tries very hard, then they might only get a 45 on the test. But I think with the grading system the way it is right now, you should, the students should be able to see that grade ascend going from, like I say, a 25. Maybe the next time they get a 67. Maybe the next time they get a 75. I think that greater vision of seeing his grade, his or her grade progress upwards from that lower level, I think that would be more of a benefit to the child, is my opinion.
Thanks, Sean. Anybody else? No? Thank you, Dr. Nathan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job, Dan.
We are moving on to school and community relations. Beth Carey?
Thank you. I have the privilege of announcing some exciting news that was communicated to the district this morning. Five students at Washington Township High School recently earned academic honors from the College Board National Recognition Program. These programs celebrate students' hard work in high school and showcase their strong academic performance. The academic honors for students in small-town or rural areas who identify as African-American or Black, Indigenous or Native, and/or Hispanic or Latino are an opportunity to share their strong academic achievements with colleges and scholarship programs that are seeking to recruit diverse talent. The Washington Township High School honorees included Angelina Chilla, Delaney Schwartz, Kylie Markham, Marissa Velazquez, and Olivia Nelson. Please give them a round of applause. In addition to the criteria previously stated, the additional measures for eligible students include a GPA of a 3.5 or higher, a PSAT NMSQT or PSAT 10 assessment scores that are within the top 10% of assessment takers in each state for each award program, or earned a score of a three or higher on two or more AP exams in ninth and 10th grade. Eligible students are invited to apply on bigfuture.org during their sophomore or junior year and are awarded at the start of the next school year in time to share their achievements in high school as they plan for their future. At the same time, colleges and organizations using College Board Student Search Service can connect directly with awardees during the recruitment process. Again, congratulations to our honorees. Incoming ninth-grade students to Washington Township High School, please mark your calendars as the high school will be hosting an open house for students and parents to walk through this Thursday and Friday, August 24th and 25th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Washington Township Public Schools is hiring. We are looking for qualified candidates for multiple positions to join our township team. Please check out our website for positions and further information. And if interested, you can apply right on our website at wtpss.org. And finally, our township team is diligently preparing for the first day of school on Wednesday, September 6th. If you are new to Washington Township and have not registered with us yet, please register now by going to our website at wtpss.org and clicking on the yellow student registration button on the homepage. This is the busiest time of year for registration, so we kindly ask for your patience as we assist all of our new registrants. Again, you can register completely online, or you're welcome to make an appointment with us in person. We are offering both daytime and nighttime appointments for your convenience, but we are booking up very fast. So please, again, visit our registration website to make an appointment. And we can't wait to welcome our new families to Washington Township. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. May I have a motion to approve the correspondence listed?
Don't move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes listed?
Oh, wait, wait a minute. I had a question on correspondence. Remember?
Go ahead.
Can I bring it up now?
Sure. You can bring whatever you want.
Yeah, just something I'm wondering if we could take a look at and what my fellow board members feel. With correspondence, if you go back, generally, the correspondence is actually listed on the agenda. People could read what the people wrote. And right now, we're getting a lot of correspondence, and then people have to Oprah the correspondence, and it's causing a lot of work internally for everyone. I guess a solicitor could weigh in. If somebody's going to write to the board, they have a right of free speech to write to the board. Like, there would be nothing redacted in it. It's not like it's coming from, you know, the superintendent to the solicitor or some employee. It is, the public is writing to us. They have free speech. Why can't we just show the letter right here on the agenda like we have done previously with the agendas in the past? And it will eliminate all this work that people have to do behind the scenes.
So thank you for the question. Obviously, anyone is able to write into the board and say whatever it is that they want, no matter how truthful or accurate it is. The problem becomes when the board publishes something that might be of a confidential nature, specifically with regard to personnel or students, or something that's just totally factually inaccurate. We don't want to republish something necessarily that is, you know, inaccurate or otherwise not subject to be disclosed as it relates to the Open Public Records Act. So, you know, certainly, people can Oprah any correspondence that the board receives. The board would be obligated to redact any information that's within that correspondence that falls within the exceptions of the Open Public Records Act.
Okay. That being said, obviously, it's been done before. Is it possible, then, when we get letters from the public, they could be looked at by you, your firm, and then placed on the agenda?
Yeah. So the board could do whatever it wants. Whether or not something's a good idea, legally speaking, is a different story. That would not be a good idea, legally speaking. You know, to the extent somebody wants to see correspondence that the board receives, the way to do that is to submit an Oprah request. That's it.
Okay. Last question. Did something change? Like, in other words, in the law, that years ago, we were able to just put the correspondence rate on the agenda. Now we've changed it. Has something changed in the past year, two years?
So at the risk of being the butt end of lawyer jokes, every lawyer and attorney has a different opinion. You know what they say about opinions. My opinion is a little bit more conservative when it comes to protecting our staff and our students and our confidentiality. So that would be my recommendation to the board. But you may find another attorney that says, go ahead, put it all out there, regardless of what it says. I just, I can't take that position. And I don't believe that my firm does either.
All right, that makes sense.
Anybody else? Nope. We're warming. I think I got a motion, maybe, Elaine, to approve the minutes listed. Did I get a motion second? Okay. So sorry, let me just repeat. May I have a motion to approve the minutes listed?
Don't move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to approve, oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. For old business. Sorry, guys.
Should that be on old business then?
Old business. You can say whatever you like. It's old business, as long as it's old and not new.
Okay. So I didn't have an opportunity to speak out last night on a few issues. I'd like to make something perfectly clear. I was the one who questioned the induction to the National Honor Society when Jack McGee was the acting superintendent. I mentioned that I had attended many of these ceremonies when it was a packed house of family, friends, and inductees. At the last ceremony, the auditorium was at least, I'm sorry, at the best, half-full. And I was under the impression that he was going to look into this. Mrs. Chilla was not on the board at the time. My question was raised again, and Dr. Hibbs and Dr. Breger thankfully looked into this and found that many students were wrongly overlooked. I was also appalled at the adults who spoke at the podium and attacked a student, the child of a board member. This behavior was unprofessional and deplorable. This behavior does not speak well of those individuals and their character. At no time should our children or any child be discussed at the podium. That is unacceptable.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Well said, Elaine, first of all. Secondly, Adam, could you maybe just clarify? I think something that would be good to clarify is the role of a board member when approving staffing recommendations that the superintendent brings forth, right? Like, what we're allowed to decide and what we're not allowed to decide.
Sure, sure, sure. So with regard to hiring, the role of a board member, and let me be very clear, with regard to hiring, the role of a board member is very limited. Board members can only vote to hire or terminate someone that the superintendent recommends. If the superintendent does not recommend the hiring of an individual, there's nothing that a board or the board individual members can do. So when the superintendent puts up a name for consideration to be hired, the vote by board members is either a yes or a no. It could be a yes, you know, if the person feels that the person's appropriately qualified. And it could be a no. But when it's a no, it can't be, actually, it can't be a yes or a no for any arbitrary or capricious reasons. For example, you can't say, I'm not going to vote to approve the hiring of Ms. Smith because Ms. Smith has red and purple hair, and that is not a good impression for our students. That would be something that's rather arbitrary. But, you know, aside from that, the only thing that a board member can do when there's a name to be considered on the agenda for hiring or termination is yes or no, and that's it. If the name is not suggested by the, or recommended by the superintendent, there is no action that any board member can take. In fact, that would be an ethics violation if the board member or board members did do that. In fact, I had a district up in North Jersey, but then again, half the state is North Jersey when you're down here. But I had a district in North Jersey that didn't have a BA, Business Administrator. It was the last meeting at which the Business Administrator was working. The board members said, we need to do something because after tonight, we're not having a BA. And the superintendent didn't recommend a BA. So what the board members made a motion from the floor to appoint a BA, because if we don't do this, the district's going to suffer. Wouldn't you know, it was an ethics violation for all five of those board members that voted for that BA, thinking that they were going to do the right thing? So this stuff is, you know, it's tricky. It's not as intuitive as people might think. It's not at all like the private sector at all. There are different rules that we have to follow. So Scott, to answer your question, the word, in a word, board members' role with regard to personnel is rather limited as they can only act if the superintendent makes a recommendation to do so.
Thank you.
Old business?
Adam, one more. Sorry. Adam, we talked a little bit about people coming to the podium. You want me to address that about safety-type concerns, or do you want me to address that?
Yeah. So I had the, yeah, you're getting your money smart tonight. So I had an opportunity to review the video of the board meeting, the last board meeting. And I'll say this, you know, obviously, every member of the public, whether or not they're a resident of Washington Township, it doesn't matter, every member of the public has a First Amendment right to come to the podium and say what they want to say for the amount of time that they're allotted. But their First Amendment rights end where they start to infringe upon rights end where they start to infringe upon somebody else's rights. So, while people can come up here and talk about and disparage and do, you know, whatever they want, there are and can be ramifications that can, you know, follow as a result of one's expression of their First Amendment rights. Now, with regard to security, the most important thing that there is in this district is the health, safety, and welfare of our students and our staff. That's it, period, end of sentence. The board will not speak about security measures or anything related to security in public session. We do that to protect the security, health, safety, and welfare of students and staff. Members of the public can certainly come to the podium and make statements about security, whether or not it's factually accurate. You know, that's up to them to vet. But again, they're responsible for things that they say. I would suggest that, as a community, we try to limit, and again, this is just my suggestion, it's not a rule. You're allowed to talk about security as much as you want, members of the public. But I would suggest that it's probably a better idea that if someone has a serious concern about security, that they pull aside or make a phone call to Dr. Hibbs, because you're going to, you're going to pass go, you're going to get the straight dope, and he's not going to have an issue with saying something, being concerned about saying something in public. So, I would just suggest that, again, make no mistake, you can say whatever you want when you come to the podium, but the board will not be discussing security measures. That's something for executive session. And again, that's not because we want to keep secrets, it's because we want to protect our children and our staff.
Sean.
Yeah, just a little something on the lighter side of old business. Mr. Destilio, what's the latest with Sanae and her Eagle Scout project at Bunker Hill? Sorry, I didn't mean to throw you on the spot like that, but...
Well, I said it over there.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. I appreciate it. Mike Destilio, Bunker Hill principal. I will tell you that we are continuing to work on making it ready for the board to come visit. I can say that Dr. Hibbs and I, about a few weeks ago, walked out there, looked at it. And since then, Mr. Schoenfeld and his maintenance crew have supported Sanae in leveling most of the terrain there. They're looking at the pathway that Sanae and her scout friends put in. And then, we also hung the awning, and she painted the wall. So, right now, once we can kind of make sure everything is situated, we're going to be ready to go. I would say, not to put a timeline, but I would say probably within a month, we'd be ready to go and celebrate that opportunity for her.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have old business. Yep. Yeah. Dr. Hibbs, I think I asked last month, have we arrived at a timeline where we're going to get a report on the guidance program during the summer?
Yeah. Jen, how are we, how are we looking on putting that together?
I'm in the process of compiling that information.
Okay. Could we put that on the next IA, and then filter that through? Okay, there we go. Next IA, I'll have it for you. You got it.
Anybody else? Oh, Dave.
Just following up on the teachers that missed the cutoff for ESY pay or?
Paycheck.
Spark paycheck. Whatever works out. I think we got pretty far, right? Was that our resolution?
That was processed last Friday.
All right.
Good job.
Thank you.
Great. Good job.
Paper check.
Paper check. Anybody else for the old business? No? Okay. Motion to open to public?
Move. Second.
Okay. I don't know if I'm pronouncing this right, so please correct me. Adrian, is it Choma or Koma?
Yes.
Choma, sorry. Okay. Hello.
Hi. My name is Adrian Choma. I've been ELA teacher in Township since 2006, and I'm currently the Vice President of the Middle School WTA members. Middle school students are unique and have unique needs. Middle school teachers have so much feedback to share regarding how our students have responded to the 60% Semester One grading floor, removing penalties for returning in late work, and the district retesting policies that have been implemented since COVID. We would appreciate the opportunity to share this feedback, along with our concerns with the 70% weight that will be given to assessments with the new 70-30 grading policy. Are these initiatives increasing rigor and improving student learning? Is there room for teacher feedback or teacher data? We have questions and concerns, and we are not being given the opportunity to prepare for or fully understand these changes before we head back into our classrooms next week. We also have questions and concerns about the 60% grading floor for both semesters and for individual assignments. The Romelli video was very helpful, but I still have questions and concerns. At the work session last week and again in the video, the point was made that a grading floor of 60 is mathematically accurate, but is educationally sound. With a 60% grading floor, a student can earn an 80% for Semester One, and then demonstrate no evidence of learning for Semester Two, turn in no work, complete no assessments, and still pass for the year. So, for an entire semester, students do not have to show evidence of learning, but it's mathematically sound. This does not accurately represent student achievement, and it does not motivate students who are not active participants in the learning process. I appreciate what was said about teachers needing to reach out to parents, and I hope we consider bringing back parent-teacher conferences at the middle level. We don't have that 25-minute window that the high school teachers have at the end of the day to consult with teachers, to consult with teachers, to consult with parents, or to consult with our students. We need that at the middle school. We are a unique animal. In a middle school, I can't speak for everybody, but I definitely speak for all my middle school colleagues. Students who put in the effort to do their work, participate in class, and work with and conference with their teachers do not fail their classes. Unless there are other factors involved that require intervention from the guidance team, from the IEP meetings, even just INRS plans, we have a lot of interventions in place. A 60% floor does not address or differentiate between disengagement or sincere struggling. In the video, Romelli mentioned that a zero is hard to bring up, and usually the example, you get a zero, you get a hundred, a hundred, a hundred, and you have to get many hundreds to bring up that zero. But not in Township. We can recover learning. We have credit recovery. We have test retakes. It's not difficult to bring up a zero if you're doing the work. So, we already have structures in place to help students succeed. An example of a 10-point scale, if a student answers two out of 10 essay questions, and another student answers six out of 10 essay questions, both students get a 60%. That is not mathematically sound. 100% is 100%. So, again, two out of 10 and six out of 10, both students earn the same score. And maybe at the training in the beginning of the year, I'll understand this better. We have adopted several policies since COVID to benefit students. We've adopted late work policies that mean we no longer deduct points for late work, even if that means students are turning in their practice work with their study guides after the assessment. So, as an English teacher, you can complete an essay in my class. Well, the rough draft was due yesterday, and that was my time to conference with you. You didn't have your rough draft do, completed yesterday. So, you took the, you wrote the essay in class. You failed it, and you're going to turn in a rough draft in three days, and I have to give you credit for it. It doesn't make sense. It's not educationally sound, even if it's mathematically sound. Now, students can earn 60% on assignments. They don't turn in at all, since there's no penalty for turning in practice work. I already said this. I'm sorry. We do record data in our grade books to show parents and administrators which students were offered retest opportunities, which students actually completed those opportunities. That's something we were required to do. If a student scored less than a 77, I had to enter, "Student was offered retake opportunity. Student took the retake." So, this data is there. How many students are taking advantage? So, that's something to look at as well. Last week's grading discussion at the board meeting I watched, several board members were agreeing that the current credit recovery or retest procedures may be too cumbersome for students. You're trying to recover learning to prepare for a test that you did not do well on, while also keeping up with the pace of the class. This is something we need to talk about. Are kids drowning? Are they in a cycle of playing catch-up, thus falling behind, playing catch-up, falling behind, work is accepted late without penalties, or are they never keeping up? These are all things that teachers want to be at the table to discuss. I want to understand this better, but I have so many questions that I can't answer. And coming back into school next week, how can I help my students understand something that I can't wrap my head around? Policies are created to... Okay.
No, finish your thought. You can finish your thought.
Policies are created to motivate students and increase student engagement and accountability. These should be considered along with policies that extend grace. We need to acknowledge that some of the policies we have encourage students to procrastinate in the middle level and have removed the natural consequences of procrastination. We need to hold high expectations, and we need to teach students the executive functioning skills that are critical to learn in middle school and beyond. We need to provide grace and opportunities for credit recovery with teacher discretion, while also keeping the bar high for all students to meet deadlines and prepare for assessments, especially if the assessments will be worth 70% of their grade. Students still need to be prepared for the high-stakes standardized assessments. Middle school teachers would appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on these critical policy changes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments?
Pam, is there anything you want to say first before I go, or who may take it?
Microphone. Dr. Nathan, one second. I just want a microphone so everyone can hear you.
I was just sharing that I tried to address a lot of what those comments were in the presentation. The, and the fact that we have the opportunity come August 31st, September 5th, and throughout the school year, to have that dialogue and conversation further, I think, gives us a nice opportunity to, to build our team together as well.
I agree. Hi, Adrian. You know, I think, you know, opinions vary on this subject. I mean, it's very clear. I think that, you know, it's hard to argue that it's not educationally sound when you hear the description of the mathematical scale. It's really hard. And what really kind of, in that video, solidified it for me, is the opposite if you flip it to the A, which we would never allow, right? So, if we would never allow that here as an A, how could you ever make the argument that the other end makes any sense whatsoever? I think that unfortunately, we are always going to have a perfectly imperfect system. And what that means is, is that, of course, we're going to have some kids that are going to not want to turn and work, right? But the reality is, is that giving them a zero isn't going to make them any better, or a 20, or some other arbitrary number that you want to assign. You know, the reality is, is that our kids need to be on the same playing field as every other kid in New Jersey that has this type of a mathematically sound scale. And it's important to remember, too, we already have the 60 in marking Period One. So, it's a disparate system out of the gate, which doesn't make any sense whatsoever. But what I can promise is that we will give you ample opportunity to weigh in on specifics and to figure this out. Now, my honest take as an educator is that, you know, the 70-30 thing, and I think Pam addressed that nicely, that really shouldn't be a thing. Every teacher that comes out of undergrad understands what should go into a sumbit of an informative bucket. Honestly, that's just what it should be. That shouldn't even be a question. But figuring out the smaller details of this, we're happy to do with you. But the reality is, is that there's not one educator in our system that won't be able to read Pam's more and understand exactly how to operate. So, I don't want to, I don't want to seem or to feel as if that, you know, people won't be, know how to survive, because they've already had this in place in Semester One, which is the equivalent of marking Period One and Two.
Okay. Janine Morrison?
Hi. I just wanted to also ask some questions about the grading system. So, like, I just very quickly just put some numbers on a piece of paper and just did like a straight average. So, like, in theory, a student could submit a 60, 60, 60. That would be like, "I did nothing. I handed in a blank paper." And then, they could come to some topics that they feel confident in. They submit their work. They get an 85, and 95, and an 80. That averages to 73. So, that means that we have a child, a student, who has missed 50% of their work. So, we don't know if they're hitting the learning target. We don't know how they're meeting the standard, because they just haven't done 50% of their work, and they've still passed. They still have a 73. It's not a great passing grade, but they still pass. And so, you know, I have three kids. I have one at Whitman, one at Bunker Hill, and one at the high school. They're all very different. The grading policy as a parent scares me for my boys, because they're, they're not the best students. They're not highly motivated, and I know that they will take advantage of this policy. I'm not proud of it, but I know that they will. They will mathematically eventually figure out a way to do the bare minimum and still be able to pass. And I think that we underestimate that there are a lot of kids that are like that. So, do we want to be passing kids on to the next level, or just passing them through high school that are not actually passing high school? And I think that most teachers would agree that a 60 floor is fair for kids who are doing the work and submitting the work. I'm a teacher myself. I don't ever put in a grade lower than a 60 for a student who has done work. But we have to be able to hold kids accountable for not doing work. If we're talking about meeting standards, how can we say that the student has a 60 towards meeting the standard when they haven't done anything to show progress towards the standard? So, that was the first thing. Another thing about the grading policy that came up was the comparison to other school districts. I'm confused why we need to compare our students with other school districts and how their grades are. Glassboro is Glassboro. We're Washington Township. Deptford is Deptford. We all do things slightly differently. When they go to colleges, it's my understanding that the college admissions department, they recalculate all the grades to their own standards anyway. So, it's not really necessary to worry about that. They're going to, the colleges are going to do what they want to do with the GPA anyway, to my understanding as a parent who's going into this. I worry for the mental health of your teachers. Their cups are full. You're adding all these policies in, and it's like, if you had a cup full of water, and it's at the top, and you're pouring more stuff in, it's all just spilling all over the place. Your teachers don't have the mental bandwidth after COVID to take any more changes. You're changing schedules. You've changed almost all of the admins in all of the buildings. And that might be good, and it might not be good. I don't, you know, I don't know the logistics of everything, but, so we have a grading policy change, even though we have it in place for Semester One. Semester One is very different than Semester Two and the other months that go by. So, I just, you know, these policies aren't going to really affect your high-achieving kids. Your high-achieving kids are going to continue to be high-achieving kids. They're going to still be getting the As because they're high-achieving. They want that. These, this policy is going to maybe make it hard for parents to keep tabs on their, their kids that aren't doing well, because there is nothing that gets my attention more than when I look in power school and I see a zero. That's what gets me on my kid, because it immediately drops their grade, and it gets my attention. And the other thing, and I did send Dr. Hibbs an email, was about the change of the NHS policy. And if we want to get rid of the survey, the character thing, that's great. I'm worried about the trickle-down effect of managing or data-keeping behaviors in power school from year to year for kids, because we talked, you know, it was mentioned that, like, we need to put things in power school.
Finish your thought.
So, as a parent, I don't want data-keeping for nuisance-type behaviors, like my kid is being a nudge, and now he has something starred in power school or a no. Obviously, big discipline issues, detention, suspension, obviously. I'd just like some more feedback on what are we going to be putting in power school. Thank you.
Thanks, Janine. Thank you.
Thanks, Janine. I'll start with that last one. I don't think nudge stuff should make its way into power school, just my two cents. But, you know, principals, I think, would agree that nudge stuff wouldn't keep a kid out of NHS, because, you know, it's nudge stuff. If you're doing things that are wrong, that's what should end up in power school. Here's the reality. Kids were left off of NHS, and it was said that they were left off for behavior. When we dug into behavior, there was nothing in power school. Then, when we looked at... Then when we looked at reasons, the reasons didn't match anything that would be a behavior. So that's the reality of why that conversation took place. And, you know, as, as a leader, or if that was my own child and they were left off of NHS, listen, if my kid broke into the faculty room and vandalized the vending machine, look, bring him up, bring her up in Genesis or power school, and that's how it should go. And if that keeps them off of NHS, then you know what? That's a lesson you got to learn, right? However, if it doesn't exist in power school, that's a problem. This whole thing was a massive problem, top to bottom, okay? I'll start there. I do agree that we should always, you know, we should always be focused on standards, which is what, that's the driving force of everything that we do. If I, I think I did quick math on your example, which I think was about 360s, a 75, and an 85, cumulative total of about 370. And dividing that out with the 60, you sit at about a 68. And dividing it out with a zero, you sit at a 32. Let me ask you, what college are you getting into with a 68? I don't know any. RCSJ maybe, but they don't, they don't like those grades. So the reality is, is that it's a philosophical mindset here to think about, when is it enough? And you either agree or you don't, and it's totally okay to not. I respect that. But in the end, a fair accountability system is, is still holding accountability. They're not, they're not making their way up to an A. They're just not. But you don't have to agree. And I think that what can't be lost here is that in every school system, in every township in the United States, if kids aren't turning to work, teachers need to call home. High school, middle school, elementary school, that phone call needs to get made. And, you know, I taught middle school, so I had upwards of 100 kids. I made phone calls, because that's what our responsibility is. We have to be in the loop with parents. And, you know, and looking at, at that concept of, if there's a lot of 60s, that should be a phone call to a parent to say, hey, Mr. Hibbs, you know, your son or daughter has three zeros in a row, which really are 60s, that's the floor. I'm going to start keeping him or her after school to have some conversations and work through it. So really, I don't think that, that piece should get missed in any way, shape, or form. And I, again, you mentioned the bare minimum. I just, you know, if kids are trying to skate by with a 61 or 62, that's, that's not, it's not benefiting them in the end. I mean, they're, they're still, they're still not doing well and succeeding, not at all.
So maybe I have a little discussion right now, because I know we have to vote on this later, the grading policy and whatnot. So, you know, I think some of us have concerns, I think some of the public has concerns, not just in the grading policy. I think some good points are being brought up about, you know, the late, turning work in late, the whole retake, all that type of stuff. Now, I'm also a realist and a pragmatist. I know we're two weeks away from opening school, right? So there's a reality to this situation of what can we accomplish between now and September 7th, right? I think that's, eighth?
Sixth.
Yep, sixth.
So I guess maybe you could talk a little bit about what reality we could do there, and if we can't do anything before then, can we commit to doing something where we get a subcommittee of teacher input and start tackling some of these other issues? Because I think it's valuable input that we should consider as we architect some of these policies.
I don't, Pam, help me. Is the, the concept that was brought up about, Adrian talked about, turning the rough draft three days after, is that, is that included in that policy?
Late work is in the district guidelines. It is similar to last year. There's teacher discretion.
On, on whether they take it or not?
Yes, but late work isn't part of the policy, and neither are redos or retakes.
Okay, gotcha. So yes, what we can do immediately is put together a feedback system on those types of items, for sure. Because I understand what, is Adrian still here? I understand what Adrian's saying. You know, I taught ELA, so if my kids were turning to work three days late when I was supposed to be giving them feedback, I'm sure that's exceedingly irritating to you and frustrating, because in that moment, and none of us want kids to play the system. And I think that's where we're getting caught, right? Kids are going to play the system, they're going to play the system. You know, I think that, that, those kids, we need to peel that back to figure out the why of the, are those kids playing the system? What's going on there? You know, I mean, and as parents, too, you know, we have almost instant access to grade books, and sometimes it's, it's not even a good thing at times. And I'll speak as my, from my lens. I am in my house at times, and I will watch the dynamics of my house when there is a zero in one spot, or a 60, or whatever it is, but really, it's already graded and in, and then there's that conversation of my kids trying to grossly defend what's going on, because it's just, there's that, that instant access to information. I think the reality is, is that we need to look at the 10-point scale. If there wasn't enough time to do that this year, I think in conversations that I've been a part of, it seems that a lot of people like the 10-point scale a lot better than the scale that we have. The scale we have is very antiquated. I think having it, having the 60 in one spot but not in the other makes absolutely no sense at all. You know, it's already there. So if it's already there, we can't make the argument that it's not working, because it's, it's already there, right? But I think we need to put everybody in a room to have conversations about the concepts of where are, what are the frustrations, what are the pain points, and where are kids getting away, from your point of view, with things that they shouldn't? And what I will commit to right now is making sure that you have that opportunity to voice those concerns and say, Eric, these are, this is how it's supremely messed up, and we'll look at all that together, and we'll craft that together, and then we'll roll it out together. Because I think that we have to value, you're, you're in the trenches. You know, I don't forget what it was like to be a teacher in any way, shape, or form. I'm always going to have an opinion about what I think is best for children, always. And I, and that's kind of why I sit here, right? And everyone has that same opinion, but that feedback piece can't be lost. So what we'll do immediately, and I know Pam has like 17 different meetings scheduled, we'll take all those, and if they're not in policy and we can reform that, and if Adrian says, listen, here's X, and X makes no sense, and we agree, we'll, we'll stop that immediately. It'll just, no, we're not doing that anymore, can't turn it back in here, or whatever that is that makes sense, we will totally commit to doing that. You can have my word, Adrian. Hang out with me if you're here after, we'll, we'll schedule a meeting, we can talk.
Sarah Figaroa?
My name is Sarah Figaroa. I am the Youth Services Supervisor at the Margaret E. Hagan Public Library. And I just wanted to stop by to thank you and our students in Washington Township for a very exciting and successful summer at the library. We had over 560 children and over 130 teens sign up for our summer reading program, so that means they logged over 11,000 books this summer read, which is really great. I'm just here to remind you that the fun at the public library doesn't stop with the summer ending. In the fall, we'll continue to have programs for all ages, including on evenings and weekends. More than just storytime, we have crafts, science programs, and a whole lot more. Our library space is really accommodating and welcoming to all families. We just received a Level Up Your Library grant from Library Link New Jersey to create more access and services for our neurodivergent patrons, so there's lots of great stuff happening. So we would encourage all of our Washington Township families to come and visit the library and to hang out there. We have lots of interesting and informative programs for adults as well. And September is National Library Card Sign-Up Month, so if you don't have a Margaret E. Hagan Public Library card, we encourage you to come on over and get one. We'll be keeping track of how many students from each school sign up for library cards. There'll be a little competition, we'll let you know at the end of the month what school had the most library card signups, so that'll be exciting. And along with that, anyone who gets their library card in September can be entered to win tickets to the Pittman Theater to see Cooking with the Kalamari Sisters if you're an adult, The Littlest Pumpkin for children, and teens can be entered to win a Regal gift card. The library also has over 30 museum passes for Washington Township residents to borrow, including the new addition of the Please Touch Museum library pass. You can check out these passes with your library card, and you can visit the museums for free, which is really great. The library also lends CDs, DVDs, ebooks, audiobooks, magazines, and even American Girl dolls, so there's something for everybody to check out at the library. Washington Township School District employees are eligible to receive a free library card. And all of our Youth Services librarians are really excited to support our school librarians this year and our teachers in whatever ways we can. So please visit our website at hagellibrary.org for more information. Thank you.
Sarah, great job. So I have the honor of sitting on the board. I actually turned in my library card for a Hagan library card just last week, checked out some books, and there's so much great going on at the library. If you don't know this, you can actually go there and check out a host of museum passes, all for free. So you can go from anywhere, from the Please Touch Museum, to, you know, there's, there's museums up and down all of New Jersey. So there's just so many awesome things that you can have there. So it's been, it's been fun so far. Thanks for being so welcome.
And they have the best children's librarian, because I teach her kids over at Heights, and I absolutely love her, and she does such a good job. One of the programs we went to this summer was the Pacific Island Dancers team, and they did a really great performance, and it's just great. It's a very inclusive environment, she's doing a wonderful job. Shameless plug for our Heights family, since that's where I'm from there.
Thank you. Thanks, Sarah. Ron Lucarini?
Kind of interesting to hear all about this grading policy, which has everyone up in an uproar. I think, Dr. Hibbs, you really started to touch on it when you said, why are there so many kids who are gaming the system? That's what I, I wasn't thinking necessarily about the kids who are gaming the system, but I was sitting here thinking, what is it about the school system that they're worried about the grading policy, but they don't seem to be worried too much about the substance of, or the foundation, the intellectual foundation of the school system? Okay? And we see it every week, every month, twice a month, right here at this podium, all right? And that brings me to what I really want to talk about tonight. Because I'm glad to see that there was a compromise, or whatever you might want to call it, with Mrs. Malatsky, and I forget, I don't know the other guy's name, and that they're going to work together. I think that's a decent compromise. But when you talk about the intellectual foundation of a school system, and what went on here last week or the week before, in terms of the arguments that were presented by teachers, no less, that was a disgrace. Now, tonight we saw, and we also have a resident in the community who supports this group, Children's Last or First, or whatever they are, they're all running for the Board of Education, all political hacks. But that person comes up, talks about this same student as, you know, and gives the innuendo that she's getting on the dish, the honorable society, I call it the dishonorable society, because, you know, her mother fixed it, and then this starts the ball rolling with the drama thing. And the bottom line is, with, tonight, we witnessed some class, some character on the part of that young lady. I also heard her name by, Mrs. Carey mentioned her name in some special award for, you know, achievement nationally or whatever, or maybe it was statewide. So, you know, I think that right there, on that basis alone, and then we hear your argument today, which you basically, you're basically saying it was nonsense, some of the reasons why some of these kids were, were left off, which leaves us to question the teachers that left them off, okay? And I would appreciate knowing what the reasons were, some of the things. I think you would, you would do the district a service if you'd stop protecting these people by not telling us exactly some examples of the stupidity. All right, but let's get back to the argument last week about the drama. And this has nothing to do with Mrs. Malatsky or whatever, although I have to tell you, you'd have to be an idiot to think that she didn't have anything to do with all these people coming up here, all right? But I heard it mentioned that this guy who applied for the job and got the job, he had no interest in this. Mrs. Chilla went out and recruited him, even though she didn't even know who this guy was. In 2016, I found out, he applied for a job here. I don't know what Mrs. Chilla was doing, but she wasn't on the Board of Education. I don't even think that was the first time he ran for the board. Maybe I'm wrong. Then in 2018, we heard also that, Dr. Hibbs, you just pulled this out of your rear end, this academy idea. There were four, five academies that were mentioned at a board meeting and put up on the screen. Somebody sent it to me today. And the five academies, I can't remember them all, engineering, you probably know them all, and I don't really want to hear them, but one of them was performing arts, and it never got put in place. All the other four things got put in place. Now, a cynic like myself, who's seen what goes on over at that high school, would say that they, you know, Mrs. Malat, just like Mrs. Choma here, union rep gets an extra two minutes to talk. I bet you don't give me an extra two minutes to talk, all right? But we see that Mrs. Malatsky didn't have the certification. Now, maybe, maybe it was just coincidental, and they said, well, we'll, we'll get to it later. But from 2018 to 2023, that was a goal, a stated goal of this district, all right? An academic, whatever kind of goal you want to call it, goal of this district that was not put in place. And now I get to the next point, all right? Dr. Hibbs, and I guess you don't have to tell me this, but I don't think you're an idiot. And at the same time, you were applying for a job that is going to pay you somewhere between, let's just say at the time, $195,000 and $250,000. That's the going rate for superintendents in these kinds of districts, all right? I would have to think that you did some research about this district, and when you were interviewing, you wanted to impress the people interviewing you. By the way, you were a finalist from a firm that Mrs. Baker picked out, not Mrs. Chilla. And give me my, my second, couple extra seconds, Mrs. Chilla, all right? Don't worry, nobody will say that you're favoring me, all right? They already did that with your daughter. So I would have to think that you, and I would like you to answer this, if you will, brought up the idea of the academy of performing arts and putting it in place because you looked up the goals of this district over the last few years and saw that that was one that wasn't put in place. And that would dispel the nonsense that was said last week up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Wells?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Hands up, go ahead.
I feel like I'm at home getting yelled at.
Go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, Jen. All right, so the first thing is, you are correct. And you can go on our website and you could look at our strategic plan, which dates back to 2018, 2020. And I'm not going to tell you that all aspects of this plan have been implemented, because I've only been here about four months, but you can see very clearly, this plan may include the development of career and college path academies that are arranged in clusters, i.e. ROTC Academy, Engineering Academy, STEM STEAM Academy, Business Leadership Academy, Fine Arts Academy, Humanities Academy, School of Allied Health Academy, and Career Entry Programs. So that was 2018. And I do believe I sat right there in my interview process and talked about the concept of a visual performing arts academy in my interview.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone. Jennifer Wells, I teach English at the high school. I've been here for 20 years. I've taught all levels, all grades in the high school. Currently, I've been teaching the AP Language and Composition Courses for the last few years, and I'll be teaching some CP courses this year. I want to address a couple of things that I heard tonight that I don't actually have on my list. The first is, thank you, Mr. Anderson, for giving us an overview of the schedule. It does clear up a few concerns I had as of this morning, when I was looking in power school and trying to see what my day was going to look like. I also appreciate the involvement of staff in that decision-making process. That does make the decision to implement a new schedule, which is another change for us, a little easier to swallow, all right? It does, even though I don't agree with some of the changes to the schedule, and I think you're aware of that, I can accept it because I know that staff involvement- you're aware of that, I can accept it because I know that staff involvement means that no one got exactly what they wanted. Right? And, and that makes it really easy to come in and say, okay, this is what we're doing. So now I'm going to address the grading policy. I was a member of the District's Grading and Assessment Coalition that met multiple times in the '22, '23 school year. Over the course of those meetings, we talked a lot about philosophy. And that, those discussions were really helpful. And I have to say that I agree in principle with a lot of what was said tonight. I don't, however, agree with the practice of implementing a change this big a week before we come back to work. It's not best practice. Right? We were supposed to meet as a grading and assessment coalition, which by the way, was made up of district administrators, teachers, parents, and students. We were supposed to meet in September of 2022. That meeting was postponed and never rescheduled and we never met once. Dr. Gregor, I didn't miss an email, did I? I didn't miss any emails, did I? No. So we never met. Our ability as a coalition to give our input, to feel like we're part of the decision, ended without ceremony. We were not included in that discussion. And anyone who implements policy knows that if you're going to implement a change this big, and I want to be clear, this is a big change. The 60 floor for first semester was not per assignment. We did not enter 60s for every assignment. That was not practice. Right? And for me, as a teacher, if a kid was absent the day of a test, I put a zero in right away, even though I didn't put any other grades in for that assignment. So that kid knew they needed to take that test right away. Right? And not forget about it. Right? That dip in their grade was like, oh, Mrs. Wells, can I come in during lunch tomorrow? Of course you can. That's why I put the zero in. Right? So that is gone because that 60, you're right, is not going to drop their grade. And it's not going to have that immediate, oh my, oh my goodness, I have to go take this assessment. Right? They're not going to have that, that same impetus to get in right away. And if they don't get in right away to take it when they're absent, then the reassessment also becomes very problematic. Right? So they're, and, and to be clear, the level of kids I teach are very busy and that's one of the reasons I have to do this. Right? Because they may be absent from my class, the section that they're in, I may not see the next day, and then the next day, they might be on a field trip. Right? Or they might have a meeting for another club or because they're on the superintendent's council. Right? There's a lot of reasons why I might not see that kid for a week. And that ability to quickly communicate with my students is very, very important. In addition, I, I'm struggling to understand why we need consistency from 6 to 12. I, I don't quite get that because as a parent, when my kids are in middle school, they have very different needs than my kids who are graduating or getting ready to graduate from high school. They have very different needs from their teachers, very different needs from their parents, and very different needs educationally. Right? We're looking at a very different set of standards. For example, the English standards.
Can I just add?
In the middle school are very much skill-based. But when you get to high school, they are comprehensive and you need to be able to use those standards at all times. And if I could just say one last thing, I want to know if there's going to be any exceptions made for AP and dual credit courses. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Wells.
So I, I'll just mention a few things. I think a lot of it's already been said. When we talk about implementing the change this close to school, I want to make sure I understand this correctly. It was already in the policy for semester one, marking period one and two. Correct? This is Dr. Nathan, it was already in, right?
60 as a floor, yes.
So I, I think maybe, well, semesters, two marking periods, right? So it's, oh, is it first semester or first, wait, help me understand this.
For first semester.
Okay. Okay. So it's already there. So first semester is first half of the year? Right? So the first half of the year, so I just, and I'm not looking to RU. I, I'm just, I just want to point out that when you say you're implementing it now and it's too close to the beginning of the year, the change that we're talking about is second semester. No?
I think there's a difference.
I'm having a real hard time understanding.
Can you have it back and forth, unfortunately?
Pam, help me.
Yeah, yeah. I think they're referring to the average at the end, they would change to a 60, but they were assigning zeros throughout the semester.
Oh, is that how the policy reads?
Um, no. It just reads a 60 as a floor.
And I think, I think this, this right here is, is part of, is part of the issue. Right? That we're looking to have consistency across the board. Here's what I can absolutely promise, and I said it to Adrian and I'll say it again. I'm happy, I'm happy to bring you to the table to have conversations about it. Here's what I can't do. I only started in May. If I was here last September, I, I would have, I would have ensured those meetings took place, but I wasn't. Right? And then I came in May and I feel like I blinked and it was graduation. Right? So all we can do right now is take a look at the inconsistency because we have a policy that says one thing. We have things being implemented probably in many, many, many different ways that leads to a total lack of consistency in what we're doing, which nobody wants. So in the end, here's what I promise and pledge to you both and all, is that we will sit down to figure this out together and what this looks like. If there's things that are broken, we will fix them together. If we have to reamend the policy, we'll reamend the policy. That's what we'll do. Because we can't have a policy that says one thing, but we do this and, and, and people do this in many different ways. Because that's just, that's just, it's just bad business across the board. Bad for kids, bad for education. Six through 12, I think we are a little different. Six, seven, eight has the grading profiles a little different than nine through 12.
Absolutely. And, and I think it's important not to confabulate an organizational tool, like a grading profile that's consistent with instructional approaches and methodologies that we use with students in middle school and that we use with students in high school. They have different schedules, they have different courses, there are differences. These are organizational tools that just help us be consistent so that we can run our everyday business and focus then on the teaching and the learning that happens. One, one thing that was mentioned is about the collaboration and I promise I will never pull committees together or teams together if a decision is already made. An organizational tool, like a grading profile, you're not ever going to get consensus on. People have different points of views and how they want those weights to happen, but in order to have consistency, one has to be chosen. So in consultation with the administrative team, I made this decision. But there is lots of opportunity for that collaboration and that input as we come back to this school year because you have, as a department, that opportunity to talk and collaborate about what that means, what assessments are in those categories, what those assessments look like, how to handle as a team retakes and those types of concepts. And then we will meet and collaborate from the ground up when it comes to innovation, when it comes to what our ideal versions of our classrooms are, our programs, the things that we're able to offer that make Washington Township excellent.
Can I, can I just real quickly? Because Ms. Wells, I'm sorry, we can't have a back and forth. Like I feel like there, people want to ask clarifying questions. There's still time for public comment. I know there are other teachers in the room. If you'd like to come up and reclarify or kind of send a message, clarify, I mean, everybody, I, we can't have that back and forth. I just want to explain that. But if others want to come up and comment, please feel free to do that. You don't have to, but I'm seeing, I'm seeing.
They can talk to Dr. Hibbs.
And you can also talk to Dr. Hibbs obviously as well, but I just, open forum, a lot of you are here. If you want to fill out a yellow card and follow up to Ms. Wells, please feel free to do that because I'm trying to read the room and look and I'm seeing heads nod and I'm like, I don't know what you're nodding your head for, like I can't say anything. Right? So I just want to encourage that. Connie, go ahead.
I just, I got another text. One of the things this year with the first semester with the 60, it's the 60 at the end of the semester. It's not putting 60 in the PowerPoint. Right now, they could put any grade in and 60 is the final grade. So the difference is, starting September, that the teachers would, would only be able to put a 60 in PowerPoint. I'm just wondering, if we already have that in place for the first semester, is there any, and, and you know, I'm hearing, and it was my question last week, were the teachers involved? Is there really possibility that we could just, you know, put this on hold here and allow, allow this discussion with the teachers? The first semester is 60 already. There's no change, other than the fact of putting it in Power School. And, and just work on it for the first semester and come back with, with a, with a plan where everybody is involved.
Help. Help. Okay, just real quick. So I think you meant Power School, not PowerPoint. Correct? I just want to make sure everyone knows what you're saying.
Power School is where the grades are put in.
You got it. Right. You just referenced PowerPoint, so I want to make sure we're on the same page earlier. Also, I just want to, I think we're getting audible groans. Just, I don't know, Adam, if you want to weigh in, you're receiving text messages in like real time, like a ticker across. I don't know if that's something that you could be possibly violating. I just want to caution you. So Adam, if you want to weigh in, I know you're getting it like in real time, but I just want to, you're letting the public know you're getting private text messages and then announcing.
Turn your phone off. But at least.
You don't have to turn.
Trying to contact someone.
Look, I, I got it. You don't have to turn your phone off. I just want to warn you and say, it's like a ticker thing, you're kind of going across reading them. So I just want to, okay?
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Just to comment on, on what she said, is there a chance we can put this off?
There's, there's way more tied into this policy. It'll actually sync Power School because we, we're switching three through five away from standards-based to, to grades. So it's all tied in. So my recommendation will be no. And then, you know, here, here's the reality. Feedback is super important. You're not always going to, going to be able to weigh in on every decision in any school district. That's just not how it works. Everybody can't weigh in on everything. It just, you'd never be able to organizationally move. There are times when we have to make administrative calls. So where we're at is that we've, we've given you the recommendation on what we think is best. You know, this is coming from all of your administrative staff that you've hired that are educated, have doctorate degrees, and you know, are, are here to hopefully do great things educationally. So my job is to make a recommendation. You talked a little bit about the personnel ones. I made one. You know, what you do around that is up to you.
The one, the one. The one thing that I would just kind of ask, and again, because the superintendent has made the recommendation, it's the boards to vote up or down. But before a vote occurs, and, and what I haven't heard yet, which I think may be beneficial to the board members, is what happens on day one of school if this does not get put through tonight? What impact, if any, I don't know if there's any. Does that have on our children and staff as of day one at school?
Well, combined with that is also the elementary changes that we worked with teachers and committees on because we made a huge shift back to, from standards-based to traditional grading. We collaboratively came up with and the teachers recommended a 60, 40. We went into what the buckets would be, only because we had such a change to do, did we meet and go through that process. So that would completely halt the work that those committees and teachers did throughout the summer, you know, for grades three through five. So, you know, it's all wrapped into that, to that same grading policy. So, and in, and in essence, I don't know how you start out with a certain parameter set in Power School. Once it's set, you can't change it. So no matter what we set, if we decide later, it's already, it's already too late. It's already set in stone. I mean, Kathy, you had no bet, right? Correct? Yeah. So a lot is, is relying on, you know, us being able to launch a successful year and I, I can only say that I'm very grateful to the teachers that worked with me this summer because we had more work to do than decide just a percentage. We had to decide how to completely rewind the work that we had been doing and then how to best communicate that to families because that was the response we were hearing, is that families didn't understand standards-based grading and that they also, you know, wanted to go back to a Power School method. And we went to like a hybrid model where we were communicating behaviors that support learning, but then also giving traditional grades. There's a lot of work involved in that. And, you know, I know that those teachers, you know, came several times to meet both in ELA and in math and in all subjects to really flesh that work out. So that would stymie that. So I thank you for asking that, Adam.
One second, Connie.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so to be clear, you're set to go with this grading system in September?
Yeah.
Supervisors and all are aware of this.
Just hold on one second.
Passes.
Dave, did you have something? I'm going to get to you.
No, we're still public comment, right? Like this is.
We're still, we're still public.
Public.
Still public comment, but we're responding to, to public comment. Okay. Go ahead, Connie, sorry.
Yeah, I think, when I made the suggestion to put it on hold, is there a possibility to be able to take out the, the elementary? No question about it. The elementary had a, a group of teachers throughout the summer. It was, it was brought about because teachers, as well as parents, were concerned that the kids were not getting grades. And then they went to middle school and they weren't used to it and that, you did a fabulous job. The hybrid schedule that you came up with now, standards and grades, is fabulous. The other part of it is, going to the high school, that, that's the issue where I'm hearing that there wasn't a lot of discussion about it. So is there any way that we could pass that portion, that elementary, and put the other, the high school on hold?
Okay, let them. It's a good question. I'm going to, just, okay, let them. Dina Ranzaro? I'm going to let you, whatever you're.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I rarely speak, but I have a lot of opinions. But more importantly, I'm here to tell you what my daughter's opinion is because after Ms. Wells spoke, I texted my daughter Sasha and said, what do you think? And she said, 70% is ridiculous. And I asked, tell me your reasons. There's no consistency, right? We keep hearing the term consistency. 70% can be one test, it can be a test in a project, it can be two tests. And we've seen that throughout the years, that just because we're telling people that it's in 70%, if you're a bad test taker and you only have two tests, you've now destroyed their GPA. So I, I think we need to, to consider that in theory, the 70, 30 may make sense if we have minimum required number of tests. And not every subject's going to be the same. You can't have, you know, if math has 20 units, are we only saying, well, now you can only test five times? Or do you need 20 because you're testing on each unit? On AP, there's different parameters on what they need to learn and the pace that they need to learn it. I think doing a, for the middle school and the high school, a 70, 30 split is a dangerous proposition. I think you're hearing from the teachers, you're hearing from some parents, that at the high school level, maybe this needs a little bit more discussion. You are right, there's a 60% floor, right, built in for the first semester. But that's across the board. It's not each individual grade. Teachers use the zeros to prompt their students. My students, one that benefits from that prompting. All of a sudden, her grade tanks, I call her out, what did you do or what didn't you do? And then she meets with the teacher and takes care of it. So you're taking away a little bit of a safety net that's been there. I think also remember that our incoming sixth graders have never had a real test grade. They don't know what their scores are. They've moved from the standard-based now to grade-based. So now you're starting at 70, 30 at sixth grade with them never having a test grade. They don't know what their GPA is. They don't know how they're going to do. But now we're saying it's 70, 30. I think we have to understand that some classes, 70, 30 may not make sense. For some students, 70, 30 may not make sense. If we're talking about them learning the material and showing knowledge and showing If we're talking about them learning the material and showing knowledge and showing that they can apply the knowledge, there's other ways to do it than on a test. Not everyone's a good test taker. I think we have to be cautious. I don't understand why, for the elementary school, that can't be separated out. I think if you want to start off a successful year with everyone buying into this, that you need to have the discussions. I understand we're two weeks out, but I can't imagine being a teacher coming in and saying, now it's 70-30, there's no discretion, and there's no guidance on what goes into it. I understand that you're saying that every teacher should know it. I have a teaching certificate in New York. I couldn't do it right now. It's been so long ago. So I think your understanding of what our teachers do and why they do it, there has to be more discussion before we just jump into the 70-30. Thank you.
Thanks, Dina. And for the public, I'm just trying to group these on all grading comments, so that way we keep them together. Candace Maras?
First, I want to apologize for leaving last week. I know you were calling my name. I went out to Comfort Abbey, and my little one was constantly calling, and where are you, where are you?
No worries.
So that was why. I did watch when I got home, though. So I'm Candace Maras, lifelong resident, teacher here in the district for 20 years, entering year 21, and also a parent of a junior, a freshman, and a fifth grader. I have a major issue, as I emailed, about the grading policy. My daughter is in honors, she's taking AP History, I don't know why, but she is. My son was honors, and he became COVID complacent. He became COVID complacent because he got the retest. He knew he had a two-day window. He didn't push himself anymore. He was straight A's all the way through into ninth grade when he entered, because he knew he could do just the minimum and still get by. I think this grading policy is an issue for those kids, because no longer does he care about his grades. He gets a zero, it's okay, Mom, I can hand it back in. Now, he's going to get a zero, it's not going to be a zero. It's going to be a 60. So I'm not going to be prompted anymore, like, hey, why do you have a zero? Texting him right away, his dad getting on his case. I think that's a major problem for these kids. You talk about kids going to college, yes, they can't go to college if they have a 68. Not all of our kids are going to college. Some of these kids that don't do their work are those kids that are going into a trade, that are going to be working for their life. What are we teaching them? By allowing them to not do anything and just giving them 60 points? We're not preparing them for the future. We're failing now as educators, because we're just allowing them, it's okay, it's fine. What's their boss going to say? I'm sorry, I'm late to work, I'm sorry I didn't get this done. It's okay, you get a second chance. They're not always going to get that second chance. I think we're failing our kids if we're doing that. I also know Ms. Gerber said that they had committees for the elementary level. Why didn't we have that for the middle and high school level? You're rolling this out a week before we're going back to school. You don't want to change things because we're going back in a week, but you just changed this, you just dropped this bomb on us. Some of us teachers, some people aren't checking their emails, they're not watching these meetings. They're going to go in next week, and they're going to be hit with this bombshell. And I don't think that's fair to our students, I don't think that's fair to us as well. Again, you said the 70-30, what about our kids that have test anxiety? My little one, she has test anxiety. It would throw her for a loop. Now she doesn't have that chance. She's going to go in, she's going to bomb that test, that's a major portion of her grade. If we want to be supportive and help these kids, we're giving these kids a 60, the 70 grade for a major assessment isn't going to help them. I think that's everything, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Raymond Ross, Jr.?
Hello. So my comments are going to be directed to the regulation that is going into the second signing for physical restraints and seclusion techniques in our schools. So I have some concerns. So for seclusion, I know sometimes if they're in the room by themselves, and we have to take out a whole class and everything else, how are we going to have resources to get them into another classroom and have them be taught or some other way, because if they are not able to do that, because how are we going to find that space to do that? That's an issue, and I've seen it happen during the ESY program. And I was working through the substitute route and everything else, and I saw that happen. And some of them did not get a full-time of education during the summer program, which was disheartening to see, and how we can make sure that students with disabilities can get further educated during that time, but also during the actual school year that's coming up soon. Some other issues that I have within the regulation is B, and it's number two, having a primary care physician authorizing the use of restraint techniques. Why should it be a primary physician when it should be a specialized doctor who should know this stuff, but also have some understanding on this, and not just a primary doctor, just to be like, sign off on stuff? So I don't get that. So I don't know why we have that for that reason. And then also, having it on six, and then it's in A for each incident, for restraints which shall be documented in proper manner to support this, but it's also like, if it's properly done, are you going to have to make sure like, they, the physician tells that too? There's like a lot of moving pieces with this, and it's a lot. And it's, I don't know, it's a lot. And some of the things that are like, I want to know, is like, I see there is training, but how often is this training going to happen for our faculty and staff? And I want answers to these questions. I want to know them, because it's really important, because if things are constantly changing and we have this implemented, I want to know how often it's being done for our students. And, not for our students, but for the faculty, staff, paraprofessionals, to make sure they're ready to work with students that are going to have all these issues, but also have things that are going to affect a lot of things for them mentally. Because as someone who has a disability, and neurodiversity and everything else, and can't see it and everything else, it would stress me out, because I can honestly tell you, some of the things I've saw as a substitute doing it a couple of times, it was very stressful. And it was very discouraging to see that as someone who is part of the community and grew out of so many different things throughout my time, as someone who's going into education, but also seeing it. So I don't know. That's just the thing. Also, I want to know how effective, like, do we have actual research on this, like, knowing that this is plausible and this is acceptable? Because I've seen a lot of things online, and it wasn't the greatest use for these students, and there has to be some other techniques we can use besides this stuff. And honestly, I don't know if anyone has this, and I mentioned it last time, there was a video in our district that was, went out, and it almost scared a student, almost, and petrified them in the seclusion way through MATHS and stuff, and that's a problem. And I know they were fired, but if it happens again and so forth, there's going to be problems for these students, and have them be more stressed out than ever before, and be, it's, I don't know, there's just a lot that's going on. And even with Partie Part One, it just says, like, if needed for restraints and everything, I don't know, and it says no longer exists through like punching, kicking, spitting, and all that, but it's also like, does the primary doctor have to sign off or anything else like that to say, oh yeah, they can still use it, but it's only for these necessary things, but you should not be still using that if the physician doesn't sign off on it or some other way? So there is stuff in this regulation that I see that, I don't know, it doesn't make sense, or if someone can clarify it for me and make it more sense, or just not have so much, I know it's just a lot, but I don't know. Just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. I'd love to respond. I would be more than happy for you to reach out to me, or I can reach out to you tomorrow, and explain to you that this is a, a little bit in greater detail on some of your questions. We're well acquainted, we know one another. I do want to stress that this regulation is aligned to what is law. This is not a choice by the district, this is a requirement. We are, and our attorney can weigh in, this is a legal obligation of the district. The items that you referenced are required by the state of New Jersey. They are not something that Washington Township, as a school district, elected to put in unilaterally. This particular regulation and the policy that accompanies it have been drafted and are aligned to the statute. They've been reviewed by Strauss Esme, which is a legal firm. I took it a step further and took it to our attorney, who is sitting with our board this evening, who also weighed in, and we actually took some steps to add things to this particular regulation to clarify for staff. So I'd be more than happy to answer any of your questions, Raymond. And just, you can reach out to me in the Office of Special Education, and I'd be more than happy to do that for you. Thank you.
One more thing, just because, look, I see how passionate you are, and I applaud that. Restraint and seclusion is a last resort for any school district. It's troubling to watch. As a parent, as a former student, it's troubling to watch. I'm not going to comment on the video that's going around, but I'm not even talking about that video. I'm just saying, in general, it's very uncomfortable and troubling to watch, and it really is only a last resort because of the impact that it can have on the child and school avoidance and everything else that goes along with it. Now, with regard to what's written in that regulation, that was put out by, it's a company called Strauss Esme. They do, they put policies together based on law. They're constantly looking at the revisions to legislation, and they're adjusting board policy. So there's a lot of boards that use Strauss Esme. But we've looked at that regulation from Strauss Esme, and as Ms. Miller said, we added to it to not only, to build in additional protections, but also to make things a little bit more clear for staff. You kept bringing up about the physician, and I know, as silly as that sounds, like, you need a physician to sign, that's the law. The law requires that, that's in the legislation, and it's in the statute. So a lot of that stuff that's in there, you might be scratching your head about, and to a degree, I too was scratching my head about some of it. But that's how the legislation came through, and we're just trying to make sure that our regulation tracks, our regulation tracks the legislation and the requirement as best as we possibly can, understanding that those restraint and seclusion situations are very difficult, both for the students, more so for the students, but it's also very difficult for the staff. And so we wanted to make sure that it was clearly kind of written out as to, and like you said, there are a lot of moving parts, but we're talking about synthesizing a bunch of different legislation together to put into a regulation as kind of succinctly as we can. So I appreciate your comments and concerns, but know that Mrs. Miller and I, and the board, went over this quite a bit over the past number of weeks. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Thank you. Melissa McNally?
Good evening. Melissa McNally, Hurfield School. We are now down to a week until our staff officially starts. Today, I went into Hurfield to prepare for my students and to help some staff members who've lost their space to teach, in order to accommodate new teaching arrangements that are necessary, due to our lack of space in the modular units not yet being operational. Staff with new room assignments are struggling because they can't move in until other teachers move out. But teachers moving out of their rooms don't necessarily have a place to go. All of this moving happens on our own personal, non-contracted time. Some teachers have been told they will be on carts. Some staff have no desks set up or a place to store their supplies. Instrumental music class will still be in the cafeteria all year, as there's still not enough space in the modular for the number of programs that need space. Our principal's working tirelessly to try to juggle the transitions, and staff isn't a holding pattern. Next week is going to be difficult for the Hurfield staff, a little short of joyous, the start that is normally full of excitement and anticipation. But we are beyond being able to impact this any more than we already have, and we are a staff that will work hard to provide the best educational setting despite these many challenges. So I ask Dr. Hibbs and Mrs. Gerber, please be in regular contact with our building administration, as I know you will. Our needs are changing daily. I ask that support be in place and readily available from ancillary services such as IT, maintenance, and that grace be given to staff who are struggling while they're working through these difficult circumstances. Maybe consider having additional custodian on duty while transitions are happening those first three days. Possibly have functional carts ready for staff who are expected to be on a cart to utilize on day one. As of right now, I'm not sure that we've seen that, and we need that. Any and all additional support to our staff and admin will be greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Hi, Melissa, how are you? Good. So we'll be happy to help. You know, I solved problems the other day with boxes and help, so we're happy to do that. We're also in constant, in constant communication with the building. I know Gretchen talks daily. We are trying to make this be as quick as possible. When we get to that spot, we'll be all hands on deck, you know, moving. We don't want anyone working on their own time, packing up stuff. We'll be happy to help and assist with that. Boxes, tape, that kind of stuff, we understand. We wish we could have moved it faster, it's just, you know, we're doing everything we can, but we're happy to help and assist. Yeah, of course.
Sarah Simpson?
Hi, Sarah Simpson. I spoke last week. I'd like to start first as not a teacher, but a parent. I do live in this district, I moved here for this reason. And thank you to Gretchen. And we spoke in length last year about the standards-based grading in the elementary school and some changes. And as a parent and a teacher, I wasn't even understanding where my daughter fell. I'm going in, having a sixth grader come in, and I don't know academically where she's going to fall, because of how I didn't like the standards-based grading last year. I was told three different things of what a three meant. One teacher told me, that's like three of four, 75%. That's like, you know, what, a CD? Another told me, well, that's like we get, where a three is proficient, so I'm good. And another person told me 80. So that was a lot of my concern. So thank you for bringing back grades. So maybe we might be able to assess. Every marking period, for two years, I had to call the teacher and ask what the grades meant, where is my daughter performing at? So thank you for that. My concern becomes, now I have that sixth grader, as I just heard someone mention, the fact of getting to 70% assessment, where she's never really had real grades scares the heck out of me, and I think I'll be hearing, we'll be here a lot if that gets passed. So I encourage you, I beg you, to, even if this passes across the board, let's give our sixth graders some slack to maybe get some, a little bit of grades for trying, maybe a little homework, like a real grade once. So please, put those sixth graders into your hearts. Now, as a teacher, this is deja vu to us. So a lot of you are not, you're not, you weren't here last year. Wasn't at the board meeting, but we started the very first week, so a week different of school. And after being on that grading coalition, that we spent an entire year making a mission statement, and we were saying, we were told as teachers, we are nowhere near making such a crucial change of 70-30 in our education. I left that meeting in June and showed up the first day of September last year to an assembly with all the teachers telling 70-30, and guess what happened? We all revolted. It was a straight revolt, and it got dropped, and it was, let's meet, let's talk about things, and let's do this. Again, I got off my couch listening. We're playing deja vu. You're telling us now in a week that you're just doing all those things without hearing the teacher. So if the elementary talked about it, thank you. But middle and high school have had no input where we were told we were going to. And I heard, oh, all teachers know, summative, formative. I'm the teacher that gives a ton of grades. My kids do really well. I hound them to no end, I call their parents to no end, and it gets done. But if you look at my gradebook, I'm going to have 25 or 30 summative assignments in there, and my colleagues next door might have that four or five. So that's a lot that has to be gone over. To me, a summative assignment, and I've philosophically gone back and forth a lot, a summative assignment shows mastery of a concept. Isn't that? So if I give an assignment, and we do guided lesson, practice, do it on your own, show me mastery, I'm counting that as that test performance category, where most of my colleagues aren't. So there's going to be a lot of confusion if you just throw this on us on day one. And the reason I got off my chair was because someone asked, can we even do this? What happens if it's the beginning or the end? We can, because it happened last year. Excuse me, right now. We tabled it, and we decided, let's do this departmentally, let's do what's in the best of the kids. I solely, wholeheartedly love a three-part scale. The, I always do my little minor grades, did they show up? Did they learn the guided lesson? You know, that's our lowest percentage. Then all the things that they practice, and then your mastery. I'm just encouraging you, I'm begging you, to put it on hold. This was, I feel like it was just thrown at us, and we have to think of our kids, our lowest learners, our highest learners, our slackers that are getting away from it. And the biggest part of this is, we had a policy with a 60 grade for, Dr. Hibbs, maybe we can like, talk on this. So our policy, what happens is, at the end of the marking period, semester, if a student didn't have a 60, we manually overrode that grade. And we told the parent, real grade 52, grade floor 60. But that included zeros. So I am a little confused of everyone saying, well, it's already a policy. Well, I feel like we're in, like, it's being interpreted completely wrong. Either you're interpreting it as something different than, but the past practice is showing you, that's not what the policy meant. So I feel like there's a huge divide, that we can't just say there's already a policy, because that policy is not the practice. So maybe, please, let's table this. You're hearing from different teachers, I wanted to be another voice in your mind. We're not ready to make this decision. We have to think of everything involved.[1793.32] And, just throwing it out there, I solely, I love, love, love a zero to four grading system. It would change a lot. Zero meaning you did not do it. Four is an A, three is a B, four, four is an A, which is 92-100, cover the whole thing. These kids, they will lose their minds over getting a 94 as opposed to a 97, and they're gonna call us to do retakes. If you're telling me they can do a part, they're gonna want those three points. If we could find a way to limit some of that, weigh in with them, like, give them an A. A four is an A, a three is a B, four is a B, I'm losing my mind, you know, and work your way down. And zero isn't done, so at least we can keep seeing, and that can still balance that extra 60 points. So I feel like we can bring a lot to the table if we can work together and not just be told that's what you guys decided over summer break. Please trust the professionals, we're doing the job every day and we know your kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
We must be nearing the end, because I just put that card, that card in, so I think I'm the last one, maybe. I wanna, you know, do a teachery thing and thank the board and say something positive before I say other thing, before I give my opportunities. But thank you for giving Mrs. Malatsky another stipend. I don't know if anyone actually said that yet, but a lot of people were really disheartened after leaving the last meeting because it felt like, you know, all these students and parents and teachers came out and nobody was listening to them. So by doing that, I think that, you know, people feel heard, and I like, I like the fact that the kids are gonna see that result. So thank you for doing that. And then, I put on the card that I wanted to talk about goals, because I saw, I had mentioned that at the last meeting, and thank you again for saying that you're gonna discuss your board goals. Usually there's district goals, board goals, and superintendent's goals, and a lot of what you were saying are actually district goals. I don't know, Annette, if you remember this, but Jack McGee always used to like bring us back into reality when we were doing our board goals, and he would say, "Well, that's not really something you can achieve, that's something that we're, we have to achieve." And even though those two things kind of go together, you just want to keep in mind that the board only has the purview to do so much. The administration really is the one that has to implement a lot of the things I heard you talking about. So we, I think we still need district goals, I'm not sure, but we did committees and had, like, kind of what, we did like an audit of the minutes, you know, what came up this year in each committee, and that's kind of how we arrived at board goals. I also wanted to ask if Dr. Hibbs is like foregoing his merit raise this year, because in your contract it says, I was surprised to see that you can earn, please correct me if I'm wrong, up to a 14.99% raise each year, merit raise? Because you would, if you hit three quantitative goals and two qualitative goals? And I haven't heard what those goals are, but a lot of the things that are being discussed seem very rushed and like, "Let's push this through and get it through," instead of like kind of sitting back and auditing what's happening in the district and getting to know people before you're making these changes. So, I just want to, you know, I think those goals were supposed to be approved by the board by August 30th. Obviously, that's not gonna happen, so does that mean that you're foregoing your merit increase this year? Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just caution the board, there were comments about the superintendent's terms of employment, and the superintendent is entitled to have terms and conditions of his employment discussed in private, and so therefore, I would just caution the board making any comments with regard to the terms and conditions of Dr. Hibbs's employment.
Can you comment, can you comment on when the superintendent's goals are due? Do you know that?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. The, the, off the top of my head, I don't know. Is it the 30th, 90th, September?
Can we go into executive later, after the meeting, and talk about it?
Can I just, just finish real quick? It sounds as though the superintendent's goals are due September 30th, do you think?
I believe it's the end of September, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
I thought it said September 1st.
Again, I'm, you know, kind of being, I don't want to say blindsided, but I'm not, I don't have the date in top of my head. I think it's, I think it's the end of September, but certainly I can look that up for you.
Okay. And I'm sorry.
Connie, you mentioned about going into executive.
Oh, I mean, if we needed to talk about it, we could go into executive, that's all I'm saying. From what the solicitors say, we can't talk about it.
We can't talk about the terms and conditions of the superintendent's employment without giving him a rice notice.
I'm gonna jump in. So, I do not want to be perceived as slamming something down and not having feedback from staff. So, I think the most prudent thing to do with the grading policy is for you to approve it based upon elementary, and then Pam can regroup with 6 through 12 and have conversations. But I will say this, there still needs to be the understanding that at times, we're all not gonna get all of what we want, right? And I think that, but putting people at a table to have conversations, I don't want it to be perceived that that's not what we're doing in order to move ahead. So, I think that we have to have those conversations and then figure out what that looks like for marking period two, along, or sorry, semester two, along with the other concerns that are being brought about ways students are maybe not toeing the line. So, what's the best way to do that, sir?
Okay.
So...
Hold on. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Pause for a second. So this would be policy or regulations 2624, right?
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
It doesn't have, as I read it, many of the elements that we're discussing in detail here are not in this reg. Like, I don't see anything there about a 70-30 split. That's more of how you guys are implementing it. I don't, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't see us voting on that.
Let's go to Dr. Hibbs. Dr. Hibbs, you wanna parse that out? He's talking about in the regulation, there's nowhere that we see where it's a 70-30, so if you can have someone respond or you respond.
Pam, what would need to get pulled from here, if we needed to pull anything? Any?
As far as the policy, we were really rectifying what was already in place from the past practice and past two years. So they had marking periods, they had these semesters, they had 60s of the floor for first marking period, first semester.
Yep.
We were, we were 60s of the floor. That did inform the policy's concern.
Yeah, like, I don't see the 60 as an individual each grade that goes in the gradebook. The way it reads to me, maybe I'm wrong, it just says, "It's a 60 for the semester," is the floor.
Yeah, it reads the way like the teacher should tell them.
We had a meeting, though, she clarified.
But doesn't, doesn't, doesn't 2B, it says for the second grading cycle, the same 60 through 100 for all work products, that, that piece and the 70-30 piece, it sounds is the sticking point at this point. And to be honest with you, I don't want to open up and have people be upset and not understand what it is if it's gonna, if they're gonna, if they were promised the ability to sit down and speak, and I wasn't here for that, then they need to, the ability to have that, that voice and then figure that out. Because otherwise, all we're gonna have is turmoil. Period.
So all it really is is a P.
I appreciate that, absolutely. I think it's a great thing. But for the practicality of the policy, I think if we just struck 2B.
Too big.
Or not too big.
That would be it. It'd be up there.
It's not too big. I like it.
That way, you still got the materiality of the policy in place, and you guys can figure out how you're gonna implement.
Yep. Strike 2B, and then huddle up, 6 through 12, go have good, hard conversations, reach out to, to the Jerian team and figure out who wants to be a part of this, and we gotta solicit some feedback and move from there.
Okay, so how am I, just real quick, how am I reading this?
So...
Policy as, as read, except for 2B.
Yeah, it would be as submitted with the exception of, and the removal, with the removal of 2B.
From the policy number, okay.
You're good with that, Janine? Yeah, are you good?
I wish it was telling her to mention, regulation not 60.
But, but you're clear.
Okay. With the removal of 2B? Okay.
No.
I think I have it.
Did you close?
I did not close the public yet, because someone's up at the table. So I don't wanna... You catching it just in time? Go ahead.
Sorry, it's 10 o'clock, I apologize. So, I know everybody's gonna be voting on, on something that's very important real fast. So, there's a lot of my colleagues here that were on the grading coalition. I was a, with Dr. Gregor, I was a, one of the key people on that, and the grading coalition, it's been viewed over 5 million times. If you looked on our website, you would see that. So, I know you're voting on certain things, I just, I just want to be clear, whatever bucket you guys decide to choose or whatever, whatever you decide to table, when we're looking at, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to insult anybody here about what their opinion is, but when you're giving formative assessment, right, you're finding out what the student has mastered, right? So, I'll give you an example. Master Ju's Taekwondo over by the shop, right? I'll tell you, he's got a master's degree in Taekwondo instruction. I'll explain it very simply. When a student achieves a routine, a block, sparring or whatever, they get a certain electrical tape that they put on their belt, okay? So when that happens, Master Ju says, "That person is ready to test." So when the person tests, there's no question in his mind that the kid is gonna get a different belt. So, in essence, what we're trying to do is look at the formative assessment, shore that up, and then looking at, it doesn't matter what the bucket is, it's a, summative assessment is always, to quote Ms. Simpson, "It's always that mastery of learning," right? So when you're doing retakes and redos, you're looking at how do you certify that learning? So, when we, we start talking about 70-30, 60-40, 55-35, 15, it doesn't matter as long as you're giving a student an opportunity to recover the learning. So, the philosophy is there, if you're arguing about the practicality of that, I get that too, but we're not, students are always gonna have an opportunity to recover the learning. And when we, when a student who gets a 98 wants to politic for 100, and we just unilaterally say, "All right, here's your retest," and they do that, the reason they're politicking that is because sometimes when we give a test, it's at a DOK1, which means the lowest level of recall. So if you're giving, if you're doing an essay, and let's say I'm having a student do thesis, and I want them to work on their introduction, I'm looking at them along the way, seeing that they can do that, and I'm guiding them through that final product. So that's at a high-level DOK. So, those are the conversations that also need to be happening as opposed to what bucket or whatever, 60 floor or whatever. The bottom line is, we're going to link it to, so we're looking at standards and how we master standards, not, you know, if a student turns in something late and I'm giving them a grade for turning in something late, well, that makes no sense. I haven't assessed their learning, right? So, Tom Guskew, he's a leading researcher in this field, and he says, "Are you trying to sort talent or are you trying to develop talent?" So if we're voting on everything, make sure that whatever our assessment parameters is, we're developing talent and not just sorting them out. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Motion to close the public?
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve the report of the superintendent, items 1 and 2.
Same move. Second.
Discussion?
We have absolutely no intention of implementing the safer term plan, so this is a state requirement. We will not implement any of those measures under my watch absent, you know, something absolutely catastrophic like the movie Outbreak. Okay?
Okay. Any other discussion? No? Roll call.
Mrs. Baker?
Come.
Oh, yes, yes. Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Law Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Choa?
Yes.
Nothing under instructional affairs? And, motion to approve, here we go. Adam, keep me straight on this. Under policy, items 1 through 12, with item 1 referencing the removal of 2B. So I need a second.
Which means what?
Stays the same.
So moved.
Means it's, we're pulling it.
Which means that we're taking the feedback of the audience.
Yeah, elementary stays.
Okay. I said it correct?
Just means, the first semester stays as it is, right? It's just that 60 floor in the second semester.
Yep. Hundred percent.
It's just for the first semester, you're gonna talk and then implement it in the second semester.
So...
First semester's already there.
Yeah. But I, no, no, the first, the plan, if we would have approved it, would have been, the teacher would record a 60 on Power School, even if they got a 20. Okay? My understanding, my understanding, the way it works now, it's only the semester grade of 60.
We're gonna, so, we're gonna keep the policy as is. What's important to me is that I need to make sure, as a leader, that we're all doing whatever's in that policy the same way. So we're gonna huddle up, we're gonna talk about what that is, according to this, under the, under the, the words that are in this policy, that's, it'll stay the same, and then we'll make sure that we're not all over the place, and if we're not, then we'll pull everybody together, have grading coalition conversations, and then move from there. And then come back.
I'm just wondering, is the expectation to come back after the first semester and have your plan?
I don't know the answer. I think that'll depend on the grading coalition conversations. Sound plans there?
Right. So we're just voting on the elementary school?
Yep. That, that's gonna be an absolute train wreck in that, if we don't train that, if we don't change that trajectory.
Okay. Everybody good? Yes. Okay. Well, I don't think I got a second.
Oh, yeah.
Second? We're good? Okay.
Wait, did Elaine get it? Did you get it, Elaine?
I didn't get the first.
I think Dave, so moved, so moved, second.
Okay. Roll call.
Oh, wait a minute, did we have discussion on this whole thing?
We, well, we just had it, but I mean...
No, we just did the grading, I have some other discussion on some of the other items.
Sure.
Okay. All right. I noticed that on, on the, at the board meeting on 8/15, August 15th, there was a policy, 5850, the social events and class trips. It was the first reading?
Yep.
We're not, we don't have it here on the second, right?
Nope.
Not yet.
Not coming back.
Okay, all right, good.
Never touching it again.
Okay. All right, the other question I have, I had a question on policy 5561 with seclusion, and Mrs. Miller had said that you actually worked with her. The question I had, it says, "Letting the parent know when practical."
Yeah.
I, I did see other policies in other districts that had like a 24-hour period, and I'm just wondering with the rationale to not have a time period and say practical?
So, Mrs. Baker, you'll be pleased to know that I listened to your comment in preparation for tonight's meeting. So, I'm prepared. So, the language of the statute actually says that notification is to be made immediately. Now, immediately means like, "Hey, I gotta get this child in this hole, you go call the parent because I'm doing it now." That never happens. And so there needed to be, we thought, in reality, immediately is immediately. As soon as practicable means as soon as the situation is under control. And it shouldn't go beyond that school day. Like, if that restraint is used, that restraint should, the parent should be notified that the restraint was used on that same day. That's how it should happen. should happen. But, we wanted to build in a little bit of flexibility, despite the fact that the statute and the legislature, in their wisdom, did not. But, we know how schools work, and so, we thought that it was more appropriate to say, as soon as practicable, because we want to make sure that kids are safe, and in, let's say, in a safe environment, before we go make that immediate notification, if you will. So, the, the school districts that have 24 and 48-hour notices, they would be best advised to talk to their board solicitors again.
You might get a new job. Okay, let's see. Just one question on, on a policy 5440, I mean, 5440, yes. One of the people that came up said, we may be doing away with asking teachers about character. The national organization, that's one of the pillars, character, and they absolutely indicate that you should survey the teachers. We're not, we're not surveying teachers?
No, that's not what it says, in the 80-page document. Character is definitely a pillar. There are options on how you could survey or not survey. The way that our bylaws are going to read, character will come through things that are documented in Power School. So, and again, if, you know, not little things, because, you know, late to school, I don't think denote character, but if there's things that are character-related, I think they'll be the things that are denoted. All we really want here is, you know, we want to make sure that if, if kids are being held accountable, that there should be something to back up that accountability.
Yeah. I also, I shared with you a school that, with their charter, where they have the constitution, and they have the bylaws.
Yes.
Are we working towards that goal?
Yeah. I don't, and I had Mrs. Grimaldi research this. Jen, we do not need both a constitution and bylaws. Bylaws, you contacted NHS, right, to have that conversation? Yep. So, our bylaws will include all of, all of what you had, and then more. So, we'll have one document that really fleshes everything out, and then what we'll have is, is that we'll have our sample forms for the kids, whether that's, however that's electronic for them as well. So, the ancillary resources and those bylaws.
Okay. Just, just quick. I just want to make a compliment on that Hibbs, the harassment, intimidation, and bullying, the form that has to be filled out, I think it's really a good form, because there won't be any question as to what exactly happened. So, I just wanted to pay that compliment.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes, to all.
Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. All right. Moving, hold on, my computer's, okay. Moving on to Student Activities Communication, motion to approve items one through three.
Same move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call. No, discussion. Yep.
I just want to make a, a comment. I looked, I looked at the number two, GCIT enrollment. That was, it was, it was pretty informative in terms of the number of students that go into the different areas at GCIT. I think too, when we were looking, when we're looking now at the Performing Arts, Visual and Performing Arts, it would have been interesting to have a discussion, is there, is there a Performing Arts Academy that we can have, where there are more students that would have the opportunity? Just kind of throwing that out, we have, we have, you know, in our, I know, I know in the middle schools, when they did away with foods, that was, that was something that the kids really, really, really felt bad about. Our foods program, the kids really loved it, they got involved with it, and, you know, maybe we can have a foods, we have, we have the facilities at the high school for that. So, just, you know, and that's one of the big areas that they have at GCIT. Along with that, part of the, part of the concern was keeping those kids, you know, keeping those kids here. So, and, and when we, when you look at the Performing Arts, and when I looked at the, when I looked at the code curriculum, and I looked only at the high school, our clubs at the high school for Visual and Performing Arts is $74,663 that we have in clubs. And all the other clubs at the high school, other than Visual and Performing Arts, is $119,400. So, what I'm saying is, we're really doing a pretty terrific job here, in terms of opportunities for the Visual and Performing Arts. Something that was somewhat interesting to me, that one teacher alone, in the clubs at the high school, makes over $24,000. But, that's just an observation. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. Moving on to Human Resources, motion to approve items one through 71.
Same move.
Second.
Discussion?
I have some stuff that I have to abstain from.
Sure.
Just survey those. L7 is lane changes. I'm going to abstain from CT. That's my wife, she's crushing it in school. She has a Manchester plus-15 now.
Nice.
L11 is contracts for, it's for Janine and that, and I have to abstain from that, because my wife's a teacher here. I think that's it for this one.
Anybody else?
Still in discussion?
Still in discussion.
Number 11, I'm going to have to, I'm going to be voting no on that, and my rationale is this. I got, first off, I have a question. What is the percentage, is it under the percentage that these administrators got? And what was that percentage?
I believe it was, sorry, I believe it was 2.6. Is that 2.6? 2.6.
2.6?
2.6, yep. Right in line with everybody else.
Okay. The reason why I bring that up, is that, that, my understanding of the rationale that you had given, when you did the non-unit, was you took people from that group, and kind of put them in a bucket, that they were administrator, teacher, okay? And, and these are, these are units that are union, and they negotiated, they negotiated their contract. And when the administrators got 2.6, not every administrator got a 2.6 raise. That was a pot of money. So, because of the rationale of how this is, this is being given, that's why I'm going to vote no. I just wanted to lay that out there.
Follow-up question. Is, were these consistent with the rationale you used for the rest of the non-unit?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
I want to go back. The question that Mr. La Liberty asked, it is consistent, but the consistency is the thing that I have a concern with, the process.
Yeah, I appreciate you pointing out. I just wanted to make sure it was, I wasn't clear if that was consistent with the way he had done it or not, with everybody else, so.
Okay. I want to call out a few retirements that we're going to be approving. William Carney, 34 years in the district for grounds coordinator. I also want to draw attention to Joanne Leahy, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, 21 years Orchard Valley Middle School. And last, Mary Curtis, 15 years daycare worker at the high school. So, I just want to draw our attention, give them a round of applause. Thank you for your service. I don't see any more discussion, so let's go with the roll call.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Abstain from L7 CT, abstain from L11, and yes to everything else.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
No to number 11, and yes to the rest.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. Moving on to Finance.
Sorry. Let's give a big hand. Allison just joined us in bunker, and Sean for Bells. Give him a hand. Yep, and let's, let's give a hand to Abby right there, too. Abby's on here as well.
It's like the whole, the whole job.
Drama hand. There we go, drama hand.
All right. Moving on to Finance, motion to approve items one through 30, and 32 through 40.
Same move.
Second.
Discussion? No. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. Moving on to Special Education, motion to approve item number one.
Same move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. Moving on to Negotiations, motion to approve sidebar agreement with the WTEA, number one.
Same move.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Just a heads up, I have to abstain from this one, too.
Gotcha.
I do, too, as an NJE member.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? No? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Abstain.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Abstain.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes. All right. New business of the board. I feel like we've talked a lot about business, but new business.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I have something.
I have got it.
Well, you're packing up, all right.
I know, I'm packing up. I do have something. Okay, I'd like to bring up to my fellow board members, maybe this type of possibility. There has been some concerns out there regarding the pre-K, and the plan, and the space, and I'm wondering, to be a little, I did, I did find out, some, some people had some misinformation, that we didn't have enough space this year, but we do, okay? All our kids have space. But, the question comes up, there may be a problem as we go forward, and as the grant money, you know, gets expended, we may not get it back after, after, after the period of time. So, I'm wondering if we ought to be proactive, and maybe have an ad hoc committee that, you know, might be in place, in terms of possible discussions about the direction, that would include community members, staff, board members, and start the process now, thinking about what are, what are our options? What, what are some of the things that we, we could do? Because no, no doubt, our elementary school is bursting at the seam, and we're going to have to put these kids somewhere. So, what are your thoughts, my fellow board members, in terms of establishing something now, and not waiting to the end?
I think it's a good idea, especially with the growing community. I know on my street alone, there are a lot of new babies.
So, we did talk about this in business, just, not just the pre-K, but the, you know, space considerations, overcrowding in general, and we started to get into a little bit with some of the specifics, and we talked about Dr. Hibbs actually creating a committee to look at this type of thing, with what we could do. But, I think, you know, rolling in the kind of long-term considerations for pre-K would be a good thing to roll into that, so.
Yeah. I think it's a bad-ass idea. And for those of you that don't know, we do not, we have the ability of educating essentially all of our universe in pre-K for free, but we just don't have the space to do it. It's just, it's not, would never happen in township walls without, without building on somewhere, and that's even after you exhausted all the out-of-township resources, which I don't know that there would be enough out there to actually even come close to your universe. I think at last discussion, we really could have opened another 50 classrooms, and that still probably would have left room for others to be left out. So, I, when it comes down to it, there's really only a finite number of choices, but I think we should peel it all back and figure out, could we move kids, you know, there's been lots of conversations since I've been here, could fifth go to the middles, could eighth go to the high school, could we rearrange, could we do X, could we build on? So, I think all that has to get peeled, peeled back.
Yeah, I think having all the stakeholders involved, so when we reach that, whatever that determination is, it's, it's not going to be all at once. People are going to be knowing, it's talking going on, and we're trying to really collaborate and do what is best for the kids. I guess the question is, when, when would we start this?
I, I think you'd start it, let us, let us get school open, and then form the committee, and you should, you know, we could figure out what that looks like, look for volunteers, obviously, a couple of board members, teaching staff across the board, staff across the board, community members.
Maybe like, late fall, late fall.
I think it's township, because I, you know, I think that's a big conversation, and, you know, one of the conversations that we engaged in this week, that I, I couldn't tell you yet, was that the land next door, we're in, in talks, could they, when they build there, could they have some form of allowing us to utilize their driveway space to have some form of a walkway? Because there's just, there's just no space at Grenlock. Grenlock is, is just, it's so overcrowded, if you drive there in the morning. So, I, I think that it's, it's, it's an untenable situation, and if we keep adding, it's, it's going to get even worse. Grenlock really can't take anymore kids. But, yeah, we didn't miss kids this year. We had, we had one provider pull out, but we found the two extra classrooms, two, Gretchen? Two extra classrooms in district, because we weren't going to disappoint parents.
Okay. So, everybody's in agreement, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some pair.
Except for Dave. Dave was, Dave, Dave was missed. Not bitter at all.
No, I said, disappointed.
Disappointed. I'm still disappointed.
For those that don't know, Dave did not get the lottery, but we're going to not talk about it anymore.
Anybody missed it?
He missed it. All right. Any other new business from the board? None? Okay. A motion to open the public for second comment?
Same move.
Second.
All right, we're open. Ms. Abby Malatsky, the floor is yours.
Hi. Abby Malatsky, English teacher and drama teacher. As you are all aware, this past summer was very painful for me. But, here we are tonight, and I am so grateful that you have found a path forward that includes me. Thank you so much to the board and Dr. Hibbs for finding a way to involve me this year, and for making me a part of tonight's agenda. I am so grateful that you heard our WTHS students, past and present, who spoke so eloquently here in this room and in writing. Thank you to the board members for confirming tonight that what we do at the Wayoff Broadway Players has merit, and that we are a successful program. My WTHS colleagues, past and present, have been so supportive, and I know they as well appreciate the actions you have taken tonight. I am forever in their debt for showing up, not only coming to see every show, and judging for NJDFL, and buying ads, and I know that they will continue to support this program, as we now transition seamlessly into the future. Washington Township is blessed with the best parents and booster club, who showed up in support of their children and their program, and will, I am sure, continue on every journey we explore with our students. Our high school is filled with supportive staff and friends, that is clear, and I have to thank my supervisor, Mrs. Barnett, and my principal, Mr. Anderson, who made sure that I continued to feel appreciated and cared for through these difficult weeks. Thank you to Assemblyman Paul Moriarty, who watched the board meeting and got in touch with me to offer his support and assistance, and came here tonight to show his unwavering support for our district and our students. I am so looking forward to working with my new co-director, and I thank him for graciously agreeing to this agreement. I'm looking forward to my new role, and can't wait to get started. We have a lot of ground to cover in the next few weeks, but with such great people in place, and such great students, we will be doubly successful. I am happy to spend this last year with these wonderful people, and to be able to finish my tenure with the Wayoff Broadway Players. Thank you all.
Carol?
Yes.
Did you finish? I wanted to say something.
I just wanted to thank her, but feel free.
Okay. Yeah, Mrs. Malatsky, I mentioned this, Angelina, in response to her letter to the board. I guess the silver lining is, I think it was, it was really kind kind of a nice keepsake that you have, those students coming out and talking about you. Uh, I, I said to Angelina, most people get that when they die. And now you, now you have something that you can go back and listen to, and, and it's just gotta make you really proud. I think one of, one of the fellas, um, I forget his first name, I think, I think the last name is Jackson, and there were two brothers that came up and spoke, and the one had a shirt on and had magic, okay? And I just want to tell you something from, um, as a, as a grandparent, I deliberately took my third grader to the Mamma Mia, which was fabulous, and at the very end, the very first thing out of her mouth was, I wouldn't do that. And I think that was the magic, when he said magic, I think, I think that's what kind of came through to me, because that was my whole purpose of taking her, to be able to see things that she could do, the very first words out of her mouth. So thank you for all you do, and I'm so happy that you're back with us in the drama club. Thank you.
Jessica Robinson.
Hello. I just wanted to give a friendly reminder for the, um, policy, Kathleen, I think you mentioned, you guys were, talked about it a little bit, for the resource material, with September starting, um, just so we don't run into what happened last year, just so the parents have some involvement, um, in the books that are being assigned by the teachers. I think, you know, by September, we should probably hear something about that.
So, at the policy meeting, um.
One second, I just want to make sure you get all your questions.
Yep, that was it, that was it.
Oh, that was it, okay.
Yeah, that was it.
Sorry. So, when we talked about our policy, we did kick it over to Dr. Nathan, we asked her to go through everything, can you hear me, I feel it?
Yes.
Okay. We did ask her to go through everything, so we have our policy subcommittee right in the beginning of September, which means that at instructional affairs, I should be able, I mean, at instructional affairs, I'm on too many and I'm getting confused, um, at our report outs, uh, for policy, I will be able to explain whatever the findings are, whatever she's decided.
Cool.
Okay?
Awesome, thank you. Michelle Watson.
Hi. As a parent, I sat here the past couple weeks, uh, I came here in support of Mrs. Malatsky and my children, and I am grateful for the decision that the board made. I also have sat here and listened to you talk about teachers and how they keep leaving the district, but at the same time, I'm listening to you kind of downplay everything that they suggest. I really think as a board, you need to listen to them, because they are the ones who are dealing with our children every day. To say that the seventy-thirdie policy, I hear it's a good policy, then I hear it's not. The teachers say, you need time to implement this, please listen to them, on behalf of our children, I ask you to please listen to them. Last week, you took the time to listen to our children when it came to the drama program. Please listen to our teachers who are, that guiding our students every single day, and listen to them, because they are the ones who know the concerns for our children. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just want you to know, we did listen, and that's why we did, um, only approve for the elementary school, so that the conversation can go on.
Okay. Uh, any other cards? I don't have any in front of me, if not, I'm gonna close the public. Okay? Motion to close the public?
Second.
All right, and motion to adjourn. All right, good night, everyone, thank you so much.